Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, June 12th, and I would like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce this meeting is being televised live on local cable channel eight. If we could all please rise so pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann to my left, two people over, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody in the audience? Being none, thank you. First, I will ask for a public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. If for some reason I forget, please remind me. Tonight's sitting will be, one, two, three, four, five, normal, you know, full-time members subject to, I think Scott, you have one, you're gonna step down.
One.
So other than that, it'll be the five members. So having said that, Charlie, would you read the first hearing into, continued hearing into the record, please?
Sure thing. Wednesday, June 12th, we're quite meeting room, six o'clock. Continued hearings, 104 Lakewood Drive, petitioner Mark Bannon requests a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure and replace it with a new single-family structure and accessory stairway on property located in an R5 zoning district, groundwater protection overlay district, NAP 28, parcel 164 Mashpee, Mass. Owners of record John J. Marsters and Deborah A. Marsters, continued from May 22, 2024, hearings at the request of the board.
Counselor. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Mark Bannon, who is the owner of 104 Lakewood Drive. As the board may recall, we were here at its last meeting on May 22nd. This is a raise and replace of a single family, a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling that was sought to be replaced. I think overall, the project was well-received by the board. However, there was a question regarding a right-of-way that is shown on this plan. And so the board asked me to do some research to see if I could determine the extent of that right-of-way and who may have rights of that right-of-way. So I did do that research. I provided this board with a letter as well as a number of exhibits that I felt that this right-of-way was created by Earl Marsters when he did a subdivision plan, and that that right-of-way was created because at one time there was a lot here that had no access to Lakewood Drive, and that right-of-way would give access to Lakewood Drive. And so that's shown on the first exhibit that I have, which is Exhibit A. So if you look at the plan, that's Exhibit A, in the top left-hand corner is our right-of-way. Okay? To the left of that is a property owned by Arnold Swenson. Arnold Swenson, if Lakewood Drive is built as it is shown on this plan, as it was by Earl Marsters, Arnold Swenson has no access to Lakewood Drive. Okay? So this right-of-way extended up there to give Arnold Swenson that right. Arnold Swenson's property and that Lot 27 to the right were eventually combined to create what is now 104 Lakewood Drive. So again, it's my opinion that that right-of-way was created specifically for the purpose of giving rights to Arnold Swenson to Lakewood Drive. And now that the Swenson property's been combined with the, the Lot 27 and like 104 now has access to Lakewood, I don't see that there's really any issue as far as any other rights. I, there was no determination that I could make that this was a public way, that it was a private way, that would give any other people rights and to pass and repass for the general public. So again, I see this as, my opinion is, it's nothing more than an easement that was given, and there's no requirement of to maintain 40 feet or anything like that. So it's not in the right-of-way. The, the structure is outside of that right-of-way, so it wouldn't interfere with anybody who might have otherwise. I know there's some question whether the northerly neighbor had rights, but again, I don't find anything in their chain of title that would suggest they have any rights to pass and repass, you know, even though that that right-of-way goes right to the property line, but it doesn't extend beyond that. So, again, it's my opinion that that right-of-way was solely for this property when it was, when it was split. And the northerly neighbor, Mr. McLennan, who was here at the last hearing, is the same owners that have owned it, I think, and his family since the 50s. You know, it didn't, he didn't object to the project and didn't object to the location of the, of the, of the house.
So, I know it's a lot to unpack. Thinking that the board would have a lot to digest in reference to this application, I reviewed the application extensively. I called Mr. Corain. Chris. And asked him some questions. I also went down to the town hall, did some research. I have another plan here. I think there's a possibility, and I have to be very careful in my wording, there's a possibility that Mr. McLennan.
McLennan.
McLennan, whoever owns a McLennan lot would have possibly some rights to this right-of-way. Why? Because this right-of-way goes up to his lot. It doesn't have to say in his deed that he has a right to it. Just like the chain of title can show an easement, and then the next deed may not show that easement, that doesn't mean the easement's wiped out. Okay? So I could spend, I spent a lot of time on this, and I could probably spend an hour in this dissertation. It doesn't make sense to me, and I don't think it makes sense to the board. But I believe that Mr. McLennan may have some rights. I believe, here's what took place, in my opinion, this is a guess. I don't know if any of you know Polly Brown. So Polly Brown was a friend, girlfriend, wife of Earl Marsters. Polly Brown did a lot of work for Earl. Great people, Earl and Polly, great people, knew them well. I think, and if you look at this plan, I circled the area, this is the plan that's on record with the town, at the town assessor's office. See the circle? That is the same easement, but not depicted as an easement. I believe what happened was Polly or Earl, and this is a guess, filed a plan that showed an easement on it, and they submitted it to the town clerk, the town assessors. The assessors picked it up and showed it as a right-of-way, or actually as a roadway. That's depicted as a roadway.
That's what it looks like.
Yes. Thus making that lot that I circled buildable, because it now has frontage. So the way back then is because of paper street, i.e. that roadway, becomes a buildable lot. Forget about all that. After reading this whole title, almost a title abstract, it is my opinion that McLennan, which is the lot to the northeast, I think it is?
I think it's actually, it's a long lot, so I think it's, yeah, northeast.
Yeah, so northeast. They may have some rights. Here's the bottom line. I said to Chris, go out and get a release from the McLennans. They were here, sounded like they weren't against it. Get a release that says, if we have rights, we're not going to exercise them, and then they're abolished. We don't care. That's the easiest way. If you can't do that, then, then I'm going to say to the board the following, and I'm following through exactly what I said. McLennans may, and others may have rights to this easement. I'm not going to sit here and say for sure they do, but I'm not gonna, I would never bet against the fact that they don't. So, the question is, is, if, and I'm, I'll go either way, whichever way this board wants to go. The question is, is if this board approves the new location, if you notice, your location's way down here.
Mm-hmm.
They're pushing the house up here, which puts it real close to the easement.
Right.
Three, four, five feet.
Yep.
If the McLennans do have rights, if someone does have rights, they go down and clear that, for whatever reason, I don't know why, and all of a sudden, people are driving or walking within three, four, five feet of the front of the house that we just approved to raise and replace. I'm okay with it either way. You know, if I were a betting man, I would bet that this probably wouldn't happen, but I wouldn't bet, because I've been bet before. Now.
Do we have in our record that they made comments that they, didn't they say they had no issue with it? Do we have that in writing?
Well, they were here at the last meeting. I don't know if it was part of the meetings.
What happens if they sell tomorrow?
Right.
Again.
Exactly.
I'm okay with it. Whatever this board wants to do, I've done the research. You, you see the documentation I found at the assessors' office? That, I think the chances are minimal that it's going to happen, but there is a chance. But it's minimal.
Right. I mean, again, I mean, now we're, I think what we're talking about is, we're getting into legal issues, that if they have a legal right to the right-of-way, that would, that'd be a legal, it wouldn't, it's not a zoning issue.
Like I said before, what I hoped was either get a release, and/or you came back and give a zone, give an opinion that, that no one has any rights, but your opinion really isn't...
My opinion is, they don't have rights.
I get it, but I'm talking about an opinion that a bank would, you know, like a zoning opinion. It's a little different than what you're doing.
Well, that may be true, but if I was representing a bank, I'd give them a zoning opinion, or I'd give them a title opinion.
Yeah, I get it. But my point is this.
I'm comfortable with the fact that, you know, and again, we're not building anything in that right-of-way.
All right. I have a question. And you said, McLennan sells. The new person says, wait a minute, I have a right-of-way here.
Okay. They can still use, if, if there was a right-of-way, which I'm not conceding, they would have any ability to use that right-of-way. We're not building anything.
Our concern is a setback from that, right? You're so close.
But you don't need a setback. If this was true, if this is truly an easement.
That's law.
Yeah, it's...
If this truly is an easement, as I'm considering, considering and arguing, and my opinion is it's an easement, there's no setback from an easement.
I get it. And again, board, I'm okay with it. If the board wants to move forward with it, I'm okay with it, because I'm, I'm raising an issue that may be, yeah, one out of 100, one out of, I don't know.
Can you get something in writing from McLennan?
I don't have any contact information for them, and I'd like not...
Can you get something in writing?
What's the difference, if you have it or not, if they, if they...
Well, because you recorded, you should get something from McLennan saying, I dissolve. You put it on record, then the buyer that comes along...
Well, I'm not going to be able to get that. So, and I'm not prepared to...
And I know they came, and they didn't have...
Why can't you get it?
I don't want to delay...
Because he doesn't want to give it?
I don't, I have no idea. I have no contact information from them, and I don't want to delay this project over, over an issue I don't think is a zoning issue. And we're not interfering, somebody's potential right is not being interfered with by this project. If you want us to put a condition in that we have to remove the stone wall, that's fine. But this isn't, it's not a zoning issue. We're not blocking the right-of-way by putting this house there. There's no setback to that easement.
Does the neighbor to the north, McLennan, they have full access to, are they on Lakewood Drive, or they have...
No, they have access to Melissa Ave.
Oh, they have frontage on another street.
Right, on top of all.
This would be the possible, hey, I want to bring my jet skis here. Again, there's no real need for it.
Yeah.
And I don't want to be overly concerning here, and that's why I'm saying it's one out of 100 possibly. It still exists.
My opinion is, as one member, that if this gets approved, that this owner knows that that right-of-way is there, if it's, and if, if that neighbor wants to go across it and drag his, drag his jet skis across, they can do it.
Again, I...
And we're not, and again, we're not interfering with that right by building this house. When, you know, 174-17.1, which is your raise and replace bylaw, is no new nonconformities, sufficient parking, and not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I know.
And, you know, we're taking a project that's basically in a resource area. We're eliminating nonconformities. We're meeting all of your criteria to have this approved. And, you know, to have this hung up on this right-of-way issue that we're not building anything in, in the middle of...
Can I see that piece of...
This one?
The one you...
Yes.
This one, it looks like a road to me.
If in fact the board does want to consider approval, we should look at the rest of it, because we've probably hung our hat too much in the easement if in fact you want to move forward. We should look at the rest of it.
So, I'm looking at this, and it looks like a road, and this came out of the town?
Yes.
She printed it for me.
So...
My ex...
So, if it's a road, and they're five feet from the road, isn't there a setback there?
Well, my, my opinion is, it's not a road. So, the 1966, there's a...
Pass that down.
There's a plan of record.
I showed it to them when I got here.
There is a plan of record that was submitted by Earl Marsters that was approved by the planning board, that shows that as a right-of-way maintained by the owners. So if he went down, we're speculating, that if he went down to the, the assessor's office to have that plan basically put on the assessors, that doesn't automatically make it a road. It's based on the plan that Earl Marsters did, and it's not a road per his plan. It's Exhibit A in my materials that shows his subdivision. And it was to give the Swenson, it's my opinion, it was to give the Swenson property access because it had no access. And that's clear. It's clear by the plan.
It's one Melissa Way was existed.
No, even after, no, even after Melissa Way was built. 1988 Melissa Way.
Is the starting point whether this is a road or a right-of-way?
No, because even if it's a right-of-way, Charlie, forget about the fact that, let's just say it's a right-of-way. Let's just say somebody has some rights to this right-of-way, this McLennan general. So does this board want to approve a house five feet from a right-of-way? I get that there's, there's no setback from it, but this board has the right to say, listen, I don't want to have the front of a house sitting five feet from a passage right-of-way. That doesn't make sense. So it's, is it anything? Does anybody have any rights to go down this parcel, other than the people that own this lot?
I guess I would ask the question, what authority do we have to determine you can't be five feet from a right-of-way? What, what authority do we have to make that determination?
Well, I think the board has a right in a raise and replace situation, because it's a special permit. Gives us a lot of latitude to sit there and say, I'm concerned about this, and lest we straighten this out, I'm not willing to move forward. I think the board would have that right. Again, I don't, I don't want to put this out of proportion, but I, I wouldn't bet that it doesn't exist, or that somebody doesn't have rights, you know, unless I wanted to possibly use my money, but I, but I doubt, I would.
If our ruling is to rule against this, and the reason we rule against it is because we think they're too close to a right-of-way.
Putting taxes on it, except...
That's an appealable ruling.
I get what you're saying. I don't think I'd, I wouldn't recommend that statement. I would recommend that we...
Why would we, why would we deny?
Um, I think we need some, for more information, just simply say, listen, we want to understand what's going on with this easement. What is going on? I'm not saying to just flatly deny, and I'm not saying we shouldn't even approve. I'm not saying we shouldn't approve. I'm, I'm just saying that there's a question out there. I've done my homework, and that's where it lies.
Where, where did you get this?
The assessors' office. She printed it for me.
So I'm looking at this.
That's her writing up here somewhere.
Yeah, I'm looking at this, and it tells me the lot is much smaller than what this says it is.
Correct.
That could have changed.
Because the lot was, in 1991, the lots were combined.
Yeah.
So again, you have a lot, that was the Swenson property. You have the Lot 27. It's shown on the, it's shown on my Exhibit A.
How come there's no update?
Oh, there are, there could have been other plans. I just wanted to see a plan, if it showed a roadway or an easement on it, because in my lifetime, when I see that, I get nervous, because if you look at like Southport, it had a bunch of roadways all through it. And when I got to finance Southport, the, the banks were saying, wait, you got to get those dissolved. It was land code of land, so I had to get them dissolved. Now, I don't know where that lies. It could have been dissolved. I see nothing of, you would have probably picked something up on record if they dissolved it.
Yeah, there was...
So we don't know if it exists or not exists. We don't know to the extent this easement is. Whether it exists, doesn't exist, and who has rights, we don't know. We don't know.
And I've done my best to give you an opinion of what you've asked me for, which is a four-page letter with almost 20 exhibits.
Which I looked at every one of them, and I still think that...
In that exhibit, does it show that these lots were combined?
There's a, yes, yes. If you look at Exhibit, it's the 1991 Mary Marsters Plan.
So...
Subdivision plan. I think it's Exhibit, uh...
Was it towards the end, like L?
That's towards the end.
Yeah. I wish I didn't know this as well as I know it.
It's Exhibit, uh...
I thought it was L, but not.
No, it's not L.
I went through these.
Thought it was towards the end.
I thought it was more to the front.
Hmm, must be.
It's not, we only have one here.
Okay, yep. So it was, it's, it is towards the front. It's Exhibit E.
What page?
Uh, I just did green sheets, exhibit, so Exhibit E. So...
E.
E.
Yep. It's a, it's a plan of land for William J. and Mary L. Marsters.
Right there. So that's the one I circled. That doesn't show it. That would be Lot 1, though. Chris, isn't that Lot 1 as depicted on this here?
I don't have, it's Lot 1 on the other side of the right-of-way.
Says Lot 1 here.
Yeah, so that would be this lot. That's that same area at the same end.
Right. And it shows that right-of-way that needs the access, Lot 1. Again, Lot 1, what's shown as Lot 1 in this plan was the old Swenson property. Had no access to Lakewood Drive. So it needed that right-of-way to give it access. And that's my opinion, and I'm...
I'm looking at that right-of-way and/or whatever you want to call it as giving access to Lot 52 in 1988. That's the way I'm looking at it.
Which one's Lot 52?
Lot 52 would have been really, um...
The top, yes.
Yeah, so it would be...
That one is...
So really, it would be the Swenson property.
Right, exactly.
But not combined, meaning the old Swenson property.
Correct. Exactly. That's, that is my opinion.
Yeah, so, so wait a second, though. If it created access and frontage for Swenson...
Right.
Then how can you dissolve it, just by combining it with another piece of property?
Well...
It created back then access and frontage.
Well, now the lots are combined, and now the property, it basically merges.
Yeah, but that doesn't do away with that frontage access, et cetera. It's just because you combined two lots.
Well, now you have the access...
If I combine one lot on this side of the street and the other side of the street, doesn't mean that I just did away with the street.
Well, now you have the access.
I don't have an issue with it.
I agree, but...
Well, this is, this is exactly where I was trying not to land, but I guess, I don't...
I know. But again, I don't, again, I have to really go back to what your charge is under 174-17.1, which is no non, no new nonconformities, which we aren't creating, sufficient parking, which we have, and it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
But then you go back to the special permit, the rights of the body of a special...
Well, I disagree. If you look at the case law, if you have a, for, if the underlying use is allowed, which it is, residential, it's not the general special permit criteria. I disagree that you can just go to the general special term, and I think there's case law that supports that. Your special permit criteria is 174-17.1, not the general special permit criteria. So your charge is 174-17.1. No new nonconformities, sufficient parking, and not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
So then there's a possibility it could be a new nonconformity?
If it's a road, it's a new nonconformity.
Steback from a street, as shown in this plan. It's at the assessor's office.
Right.
Stephen, I'm saying, and I, and I don't know if that's right. I'm not saying it is.
Right, well, I'm telling you...
I'm not saying it. I'm sure it is.
No, my opinion is it's an easement.
I just kind, I kind of wish that we would be, we could get to the point where we could be guaranteed that it isn't right. That's all. It's a gray area. I want to take the gray area out.
I would love to give, take the gray area out, but I, and I feel like I've done it the best I can with my letter. So, you know, and again, there's nobody here...
Well, in reading every, reading every page, I don't think you got to the point that unequivocally positively proves the fact that this has been dissolved, whatever you want to call it, whether it's a right-of-way or a road. It hasn't been dissolved.
My...
I mean, it's even shown in that plan as a right-of-way.
Right. I'm not, I'm not saying that it's been dissolved. I'm just saying that it may exist. But the reason, the scope and extent of it was to give access to the Swenson property.
And frontage.
Well...
It wouldn't have been a buildable lot.
But it, it was already buildable. It already had a house on it back then. It was already a house there.
Well, how, how old's the house?
That lot was created in the 1950s. It was already there.
So...
It was already there.
It muddies it even worse in my head.
So it was already, that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying it's access, not frontage, because that, that building already exists. That, if you look, I, I don't know if I have, I have it in the, oh, I don't know if Mary Ann has it. In the materials, I always provide you with the, with the, I always provide you with the assessor's field card. That assessor's field card will tell you when that building was built. I don't know if I have it in front of me.
I, I don't, again, I'll say this to the board like the second or third time. I, I don't know what rights are there, if any. I have no idea. Nothing, any approvals there. Aren't any rights? I have no idea.
Charlie, any thoughts?
You know, I don't think it makes much difference whether it's called an easement or a right-of-way, starting off from that, okay? Ultimately, is, is what you conclude from looking at it, Ron, that whatever is going to happen there is subject to what's shown on that plan, whether it's called an easement or a right-of-way.
That is correct.
Why not put that in the, the approval in the motion?
What, what would that motion, what would that read like?
Well, I don't know, but I'm, I don't know what we could do.
But we can't control, my concern, see, it's not my concern, uh, my concern is for that gentleman to the northeast, whoever that may be, whether it's the gentleman who came in front of us, or he sells, and it's to the, to the buyer. And he walks in to, knocks the door and says, hey, I'm going to clear this right-of-way, and I'm going to start using it, because it comes right up to my property line. Thus means that I have a right to it.
But again, that's not, you're not, I'm not asking you, and no one here is asking you to make a determination of who has legal rights. That's not your charge to make determination of legal rights.
No question.
So if that guy comes and knocks on somebody's door and says, Mr. Bannon, I have legal rights, and Mr. Bannon says, no, well, then they fight it out, and that has nothing to do with the zoning board.
And if that new neighbor decides he, he can't, just because it's a right-of-way, he doesn't have the right to go clear the, clear it?
He may have that right.
Yes, he does.
But again, we're not...
I can tell you many stories. Pym's Road, as you, I don't know if you've driven down to 30 years ago, was just all grown up, whatever. My style of Southport, I had stuff in it, and the town commander said, no, it's going to be wide open. People have to pass from one end to the other. Don't put your stuff there. I owned the other, other side of it.
I said everything else, and...
Drive a car down it.
But that was more clear...
I said, how, there's trees in the middle.
But that was more, that was clear was a road.
Oh, no, no. It was a right-of-way, technically. But then, it was, it was shown on an assessor's plan. That's why I generally go to assessors. When I try to find a buildable lot, in my younger days in building, younger, I used to look for buildable lots. Why? By having frontages on the assessors' paper roads. That would be exact, I would be, if, if that lot wasn't built on Lot 52, I'd be knocking on builders, down the building department, preparing a board of health plans, saying, I want, that's a buildable lot, only because it's shown on an assessor's plan.
Here we go.
Even if it wasn't built.
Your assessor's field card says that the structure was built in 1942.
Yeah, I mean, I get it. All right. That just raises more, and again, this may mean nothing. It may be, I don't know.
Because we're not, again, we're not, I know it's close, but we're not putting any structure, we're not asking you to approve any structure in that right-of-way.
I get it. I mean, it's this gentleman to the northeast, McLennan, McLennan, whatever's, whoever owns that piece of property could claim rights. Whether they have them or not, I don't know.
Well, what about you approving this project as interfering with his rights, which again, I think is outside your scope anyways?
I understand you, you, I understand where you're coming from.
So, and again, he was here. He had an opportunity to be at the meeting at the, on the 22nd, and if he, he could have vehemently objected to this project.
It's like I said to you in our conversation, if you couldn't get a sign-off from him, my attitude is, I'm going to say to the board what I know, and then the board's going to make the decision. I'll go along with whatever this board wants to do.
Again, we're not doing anything to interfere with any rights that somebody may have.
He had, we had a right-of-way issue down in Monmouth Square.
Correct.
Probably within the last year.
Yep, it was the Fordham project. I was going to bring this up. There was a shed in the middle of that right-of-way, and you required us to move the shed out of the right-of-way. So, again, we're not proposing, if, again, if you want to get rid of that rock wall, get rid of that rock wall.
Get rid of the rock wall, I'm for it.
Okay.
There you go.
Then we're done. Get rid of it. Because nothing else, there's no other structure proposed for that right-of-way.
I agree with you, Joe.
I'm fine with that.
If that's, I would just recommend to the board to look at the rest of the plan, because we spent a lot of time on the right-of-way. Just make sure you're happy with the rest.
I've, I've heard, I've heard it, and I've heard it, and I've heard it.
If I'm okay, I'm going to go with whatever the board says.
So I agree completely. If the board says that there's no obstruction, no obstructions in that right-of-way as a condition, then we're good.
So that being said...
Rather than say it that way, removal of the stone wall.
Correct. That's fine, too. Absolutely.
So, do we have any conditions, if there were a motion to be made, that need to be part of the, that motion, because we read letters, et cetera? I would make sure we have...
No structures whatsoever in the right-of-way.
Yeah, that's one.
Be subject to removal of the rock wall shown in the easement slash right of way, right?
Is there anything else that we read into the record that we have to condition upon? Board of Health, Conservation.
We have to re-read the, the.
You may want to, only because there could be something in there you want to add to the condition.
This is received 66.
We have to get comments out there.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to, I just, I'm just making a statement, I'm not ready for a motion.
No, this is the motion, this is the comments from the department.
Yeah, well, yeah, why don't we do this? Why don't someone read the comments, we'll go to the audience, we'll come back to the board.
Do you want to do the comments first?
Please.
All right, this is conservation from June 12, June 12. 104 Lakewood Drive, resource areas, land underwater bodies, inland bank, and N H E S P, estimated and priority habitat of rare species. Notice of intent, application, to raise and replace the existing dwelling with a new dwelling further inland from the edge of the Mashpee Pond. Installation of microfast septic system, dry wells, access path to pond, seasonal pier and float in restoration plantings. Removal of boats, floats, and various debris on site will be disposed of before construction. And the notice of intent was approved on April 4th hearing date with the condition of a driveway made of pervious material with a unanimous vote.
Great.
That's conservation.
About Board of Health?
Board of Health, I get it. 104 Lakewood Drive, Board of Health, four bedroom, septic is designed. House is in phase two of SOAR plan. On June 5th, 2024, the Board of Health granted a variance for the property to have a four bedroom with a conventional system. This variance is only allowed since it is in phase two of the SOAR. If the SOAR plans change and 104 Lakewood Drive is no longer receiving SOAR hookup, then the owner must either upgrade the septic, one, upgrade the septic to an IA with nitrogen aggregation, aggregation credit, land equaling 13,000 plus square feet, or two, remove two bedrooms and install an IA system.
We got DPW.
There's a note from Catherine Laurent, too.
DPW.
Got it? Okay. I think that's all there is, isn't it?
So, do we have DPW, or don't we?
Yeah, it's, uh, Lakewood Drive is a town-owned road, any modification to existing driveway will require approval from the DPW.
So if someone were to make a motion.
This was already read into the record the last hearing.
It would be including but not limited to Conservation, Board of Health, and DPW.
Correct.
All right, audience, anybody in the audience have any questions or input into this application? I see nothing. Uh, David is not here. Um, anybody on this board have any other questions, issues, or concerns?
Nope.
Is this a road or not a road? That's my, my question.
You know what? I'm not going to sit here today and tell you whether it's a road, an easement, who has a right to it or doesn't.
I'm telling you it's an easement.
An easement and a road are two different things, that's, that's.
Right.
I am not an attorney, and I, I can disagree with counsel sitting here, and I can tell you that I could argue that it's a road, I could argue it's an easement, and I could argue who has rights to it, but I may lose that argument across the board.
Okay, because I have an issue if it's a road.
Again, I.
I don't believe it's a road.
I don't either.
I have no idea whether it is or isn't.
I don't.
I don't, I have no idea, because it, just because it says it's an easement.
Yeah, I have no issue if it's an easement, but I have an issue if it's a road.
And I don't think there's any, any, any evidence.
We can't answer your question.
I don't think there's any evidence that says.
No way I can answer it, and I've spent hours of this. I can tell you.
I've done the best I could to give you that information and.
All right, so let's.
We also, we also have a letter here.
From? Oh, I didn't.
23 Melissa F.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that. Let's read that into the record, please.
Says, was read into the record at the last hearing. So this person, Barbara B. Nichols of 23 Melissa F., is in favor.
Nice, okay. All right, so. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion in reference to the application?
Certainly.
Relative to 104 Lakewood Drive petitioner, Mark Bannon requests a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family structure and replace it with a new, single-family structure and accessory stairway on property located in an R5 zoning district, groundwater protection overlay district, map 28, parcel 164 Mashpee, Mass. Owners of record, John J. Marsters and Deborah A. Marsters, with the following conditions. Number one. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Laws 40A Section 9. Number two. Site plan, prepared for Mark Bannon, 104 Lakewood Drive, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared by BSC Group, scale 1 inch equals 10 feet. Revisions 31924, reduce bank disturb, increase plantings 4924. Conservation request stamped and signed by Kiran J. Healy, professional land surveyor, number 48135. Three, building plans, prepared for Mark and Pam Bannon, 104 Lakewood Drive, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared by Tom Verone, CS-087743, date 2/21/14. A1.1 front and rear elevations, A1.2 right and left elevations, A2.1 foundation, A3.1 basement, first, second floors, A4.1 framing, A5.1 sections. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to Board of Health, Conservation Department, and Department of Public Works comments. Any changes to, strike that. Next would be number five, subject to removal of the rock wall shown on the plan. Number six, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number seven, condition that the applicant seek and obtain town planners review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. Number eight, the board finds under 174-17.1, 174-33, that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood, that there is sufficient parking, and there are no new nonconformities being created.
I have one question, Charlie. When will the rock wall be removed, prior to a building permit, or prior to occupancy?
It hasn't been.
I don't think it's been constructed, I think it's proposed.
It's part of the, it's part of the proposed construction.
I see, it's going to be removed off the plan.
Right, so submit new plans with, I would say, I would say, applicant will submit revised plans showing the elimination of the rock wall.
Okay.
You'd have to sign off on those.
Which need not be returned to this board.
No, you can just submit it to the billing department, I would say, how's that? Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, counselor?
Very much.
Spent all my life reviewing the easement, I forgot to look at the plan.
You did. Unbelievable.
You're above me.
No.
I'm always not.
Say again?
Never mind.
Come on back.
You got some plans?
Plan signed? That is true.
You're out of here, right?
I got to sign first.
Building, anything signed? Nothing? You could, you could do the building.
So what? Scott stepping down, you've got to.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. I can handle that one.
I know you can.
Just got to sign this one thing for Mary Ann. We're going left, we're going right. So what's, uh, sixth?
Who is it?
12. There you go, Mary Ann. All right, so, on the next new hearing, it will be the four regular members with, why don't we say, George, how's that? Is that okay? So that being said, Charlie, would you read the next, well, the first new hearing into the record, please? 3 Elliott.
New hearings, 3 Elliott Road. Owner, Schooners Way LLC, request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a 196.56 square foot addition to the front of the home and replacement of the existing deck to the rear of the home with a new 16-foot by 16-foot, 256-square-foot deck of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district and the Pompanessit Overlay District, map 117, parcel 131, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay, one second while we pass these out, if you would. If you guys can take a, whatever closes. Hmm?
We'll share.
Send that one down.
So we do not have David, and we do not have Scott, so somehow we're going to have to take a look at those plans as best we can. Okay.
Ron?
There we go.
This one should be pretty straightforward, I think.
Oh, really? Okay.
Like the last, I know, right?
Yeah.
Don't worry about me.
You wise guy. All right, so counselor, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair members of the board, again, for the record. Attorney Christopher Crane, representing Schooners Way LLC, owner of the property located at 3 Elliott Road. Also with me tonight is Raoul Lozari Rivera from Cape Island Engineering, if there's any questions regarding the site plan. This is a request for a written finding to make two additions to the property. One is a rear, rear deck, and the other is for a front covered porch, so to speak. It is located in the Pompanessit Overlay District, as this board knows. The Pompanessit Overlay District has minimum dimensional requirements of 6,000 square, square feet of lot area, 60 feet of frontage, 25-foot front yard setback, 15-foot rear and side yard setbacks, 25% lot coverage, and also, as always for any lot, 50 feet from a wetland resource area. So this lot is wholly within land, subject to coastal storm flowage. So despite the fact that there is actually over 10,000 square feet of lot area, for zoning purposes, there is zero square feet, because we're completely within the flood zone. That renders our lot coverage at 100%, and our setback to wetlands is zero. We also have a noncon, nonconformity to the front yard setback of 21.5 feet from Shore Drive. So this fronts on both Elliott and Shore, so again, we need to meet both front yard setbacks, which is 25, and again, L, the, the front yard setback to Shore Drive is nonconforming. So those are your nonconformities. Again, what we're proposing is an addition to the front, which is, again, a covered porch, a rear deck, both of those additions will comply with your current dimensional requirement. So they will be within your 25 feet from Elliott for the front, with, and 15 feet, over 15 feet from both sides, and your deck will be 15 feet off the property line and from both the rear and the side. So all the new additions will completely comply with current setback regulations. There was a shed, if you can look in the bottom left-hand corner, that appears to be over the property line. It is under 100 square feet, so that is being relocated to, to be outside of 5 feet from the property line.
Is it depicted on the plan that way? I don't, I don't have one in front of me, which is fine.
Yeah, so it's right here. So, over the property line, it's being moved off the property line, it's going to be moved. It's going to be moved. So, overall, the increase in square footage of the additions amounts to approximately 350 square feet. That's what we're increasing the overall coverage from. So, the coverage, if you take the coverage as a percentage of the total lot area of 10,000, we're at 22.2%, which is less than 25%. So, and there, this was approved by Conservation. The green that's shown there is mitigation and restoration, which is being proposed as part of this project. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we're not, you know, we're not creating any new nonconformities, we're not intensifying any existing nonconformities. You know, certainly this project is, you know, the redevelopment's consistent with other projects that you see in and around this area of Pompanessit. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to any questions.
So why don't we read letters into the record, please, so the board has all the information, and then we can.
Got two notate, two notations.
Shoot.
Board of Health comment and Conservation comment.
Mary Ann, please.
Board of Health, relative to 3 Elliott Road, received 61024. Five-bedroom house, two on the first floor and three on the second floor. Septic permit and installation in process for five bedrooms. Conservation comments, 61224, 3 Elliott Road. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flow. Request for determination of applicability, RDA application, to replace existing rear deck, construct covered porch on front of dwelling, relocate shed, and add native plantings along Shore Drive lot line. Project received a negative determination at the April 18th hearing date with a vote of 4 to 1.
Great, do we have anything else to be read in the record?
Board of Health and Conservation, those are the only two, I don't have any other letters or anything.
Board questions, please.
You're removing the rinse station, it looks like.
Yeah, I think if it says.
You relocating it anywhere?
I'll, I'll jump in on that one.
Good evening, for the record, Raoul Lozari from Cape Island Engineering. The rinse station is going to be rebuilt on the new deck. Currently is on the existing deck, is going to be taken down to rebuild the deck, and it's going to be put back on.
So it's going to be back in the same place?
Right.
Yeah.
The shower comes up the, the house wall.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so it's an outside shower?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure what a rinse station was.
Was this plan, was this house recently built?
I can tell you that.
Maybe they cut the fish.
It has.
Well, no, he's asking about rinse station.
Was this plan, was this house recently built? It's the house.
Not that I, not that I know.
Well, I'm just looking at the plans, the plans show the entire house is almost a new build, you know what I'm saying?
Well, if you go to, yeah, if you look at it, I mean, they're putting like dormers, yeah, up on top.
Yeah, and I see, you're only seeking relief for the section, certainly because of you need relief in those sections, but they're doing a lot of work to the rest of the house.
Yes, that is correct.
I see what you're saying, because I'm looking at the plans, I'm saying, wow. These, these house plans go into real depth to just the front deck and the rear deck.
Correct, but everything else is, everything else is like second story within the, in their gun.
Yeah, which you don't need relief from.
Right.
I understand, I'm just saying, there's a, it's almost like the house hadn't been built, and it's a brand-new application across the board. That's because they're so in-depth.
Right.
But they, they don't need relief from us.
Exactly, we don't, it's none of our purview, I get it. So I'm just, that's why, this is the first time I've seen an application like this, it's just so in-depth. All right, so any other board questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. So Mr. Morris is not here. And we have no letters from abutters.
Nothing else, no?
Audience input, please, in reference to this application. Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go back, so there are no board questions, correct?
Nope.
Nope. Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, who wants to second? All of the favor?
Aye.
Motion to appro, a motion for the application itself.
Got it. Make a motion relative to 3 Elliott Road. Excuse me, owner Schooners Way LLC requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a 196.56 square foot addition to the front of the home and replacement of the existing deck to the rear of the home with a new 16-foot by 16-foot, 256-square-foot deck of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district and the Pompanessit Overlay District, map 117, parcel 131, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A Section 6. Site plan, proposed porch and deck expansion prepared for Schooners Way LLC, 3 Elliott Road sheet, number 1 of 1, date March 29th, 2024. Prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Matt Costa, number 52282. Plans, prepared for Pappas Residence, 3 Elliott Road, Mashpee, Mass. Date November 3, 2023, 3.1. Elevations in section 1.3. Roof plan 1.2, second floor plan 1.1. First floor plan 1.0. Basement plan D 1.2, demolition plan D 1.1. Demolition plan prepared by William J. Masiallo, Architect, Inc. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, the board finds that under 174-17 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood, that there is sufficient parking, and that there are no new nonconformities being created.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Get it, get Scott back.
Yeah. It's so nice when things go smoothly.
Yes.
Joe, I think it's in the plumbing code that outdoor showers are illegal. That's why it's not a station.
Exactly.
So just because you changed the name, does it?
Yes.
Yes.
That does it.
That does it. As long as you call it a rinse station, you're cool.
Yeah, but in the plumbing code, it's illegal to put it outside.
It's a board of health.
Yeah, but just because you changed the name.
That's how it works.
Because you're not showering, you're not showering where your lot of fluids go into the ground.
Just rinsing.
They call it dog wash, too.
You're right. It's semantics to get around the, there are a lot of semantics in the world. We don't argue with them, we just uphold them. Ooh, I had to stop that one over again.
I'm not informed about rinse stations.
I hear about them on a regular basis.
We all set? So on this one, sitting will be the five full-time members. Charlie, would you like to read 48 Greenwood Road into the record?
Will do, run. 48 Greenwood Road. Owner Joyce A. Marsters, trustee of the Greenwood Trust, requests a special permit under 174-17.1, 174-33, and 17417 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling with a new, single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district and the Pompanasset Overlay District Map 117 Parcel 323 Mashpee, Mass.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Joyce Marsters, trustee of the Greenwood Trust. As noted in the hearing notice, we are applying for a special permit under 174-17.1 to raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residence and located within the Pompanasset Overlay District. So as the board knows, the Pompanasset Overlay District requires 6,000 square feet of lot area, 60 feet of frontage, 25 feet front yard setback, 15-foot rear and side yard setback, 25% lot coverage, and as always, 50 feet of wetland resource area, from a wetland resource area. This lot is wholly within land subject to coastal storm flowage. So we are 100% lot coverage and we are zero feet from the wetland resource area. And we also have a non-conformity to Greenwood Road at 22.6 feet. So what is being proposed, well, I should note, as a percentage of lot, as a percentage of total lot area currently is 13.6%. So we are proposing a new structure that will, again, be compliant with building code criteria, will be compliant with flood zone criteria. This project has been approved by the Conservation Commission. There is no intensification of any of the existing non-conformities, nor are we creating any new non-conformities. The applicant will be installing an IA system. The existing front yard setback to Greenwood Road will be eliminated. So the one non-conformity that we can address, which is the front yard setback, is being eliminated. Drywells are going in. The proposed home is consistent with redevelopment in the neighborhood. And the overall coverage of structures as it relates to total lot area, which in this case is 8,000 square feet, is 22.9%, which is, you know, less than 25%.
Okay.
Go around the neighborhood, certainly consistent with redevelopment in this area. I showed the houses that are immediately adjacent and they're all nicely redone large homes. So I think this is entirely consistent with the neighborhood. So again, 17417.1, sufficient parking, which we have, no new non-conformities, we're not creating any new non-conformities, and not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Again, building code compliant, flood zone compliant, not creating any new non-conformities, not intensifying any existing non-conformities, IA system, eliminating the front yard, drywells, and overall structure coverage is less than 25%.
Charlie, could you read any comments? Either from boards or abutters or anyone else?
Comments from the Conservation Commission, comments to Board of Health, one original one and a supplementary one from Zach Seabury dated 611, 2024. First, relative to the Conservation Commission, dealing with 48 Greenwood Road. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage, LSCSF. NOI application for raise and replace of existing dwelling with installation of IA septic system. Previous parking area, previous paved patio, drywells, native rain garden, tree planting, and relocation of shed. NOI application was approved unanimously at the May 9 hearing date. Relative to the Board of Health comments, 48 Greenwood Road, dated 61024, code compliance officer will be doing a walkthrough to look for third bedroom. I will have an addition to my comment depending on their findings. And the comment from Zach Seabury dated 61124. Property is in Zone 2, 61124. Code compliance officer conducted a walkthrough bedroom. Current house has three bedrooms. Septic plan is designed for three-bedroom with IA system. I don't have anything from any abutters.
Okay.
I assume there was an update from one board of health comment to the other?
Yes, that is correct.
What changed that?
There was a, they did an inspection to determine the number of bedrooms. So the comment that Charlie just read said that that's the most recent comment, said that the code compliance officer went in there, determined there was three bedrooms, the IA system is built for three bedrooms. That's the one that, the most recent one Charlie read.
The initial board of health indicated that there'd be a walkthrough. Zach's subsequent report was the results of the walkthrough.
Any other board questions, please? I do have a question. May I speak to the engineer for a second?
Yes, you may.
At what, you know, you continue to create havoc in my brain, and I'll tell you why. The design of your roof drainage with the overflow pipe, at what time, at what point and what storm, and is it DEP or is it NOAA, is the water going to come out of that overflow pipe? Is it a five-year storm, a 10-year storm, 100-year storm? What point?
So the overflow pipe that we're talking about is the downstream overflow?
That's correct.
So yes. The 100-year storm will overflow, the 50-year storm will overflow. Those are.
At what point does it stop overflowing? Because here's my, if the drainage isn't adequate at all, it's going to overflow in a one-year storm. Why even claim that you have retention on the site?
So we are proposing retention. We are proposing drainage system, so it's an improvement over anything that we have. So we have a 10-year storm design here. We have, not just for roof runoff, for those who actually went to the site, the northeast corner of the property, there's a low point, so we are actually capturing some runoff that could collect at that location. The road itself is much lower, so the road collects most of the drainage.
When was the last time we had a 10-year storm?
I don't know.
Listen, until this board comes up with design regulations, I guess I have to just keep my mouth shut. But it's, you know, frustrating as heck to me to see a 10-year storm, you know, a 20-year storm not putting into the ground.
Right, but a 100-year storm is almost eight inches of rainfall.
Yeah, I'm not asking to put 100, and I'm not going to spend the time anymore, but it's just, you know what, a 10-year storm, whatever, just keep going. It's frustrating as heck for me. I mean, we try to, we try to allude to the fact, you probably even asked us, you don't even ask this question at the level of conservation, probably.
Well, no, at the conservation process, we have to do an improvement.
Well, improvement is a one-year, holding one-year storm. Improvement?
It is.
I'm saying, I'm saying the right thing to do is probably a 50-year storm.
Right, but if it's put into a regulation, then we have something to go and design for. But it is not in the regulations specifically.
Continue. So do we have any other comments from the board?
I have lots in land subject to coastal storm flowage.
Yeah, but all we're doing is, so you're taking an impervious roof, area, which is this roof, and you're adding it, and the water's going to hit that roof and it's going to go somewhere quicker than it ever went before. Because what exists today there? A less of an impervious roof, right?
So right now, there's roughly 1,100 square foot of roof area.
And what's it going to be afterwards?
It's going to be 1,800 square feet.
So you're adding 700 feet of impervious area, meaning it doesn't take any effort, doesn't take any seepage, so you're adding that.
I agree.
And where's it going? Just adding to the problem?
I agree.
I don't think it should be doing that. But you know what? At this point, we don't have the design criteria, so I can't really sit there and say, why did you do it that way? Because he did it the way he felt the way to do it.
One of the findings that this board could do is that there is an improvement. We are proposing drywells.
I get it, but I'm saying the improvement should be substantially higher than a 10-year storm. That's all I'm saying. Because you're in an area that is subject to flooding anyway.
Right. If it's flooded, it doesn't matter what we do for drainage.
We can move the question. Anyone else on the board have any input? Yes.
Attorney Corain might have mentioned it and I missed it. What's the lot coverage going?
22. Yep, so 22%. So existing as a percentage of total lot area, because since we're in land subject to coastal flowage, we call it 100%. But to give you something to, to be common sense, that as a percentage of the total lot area, it's 22%. The Pompanasset Overlay District is a maximum of 25%.
And Raoul, is the cantilever included in that? Well, if you're at 22%, you're not even, you got plenty of room.
The cantilever is.
Cantilevers are extended from setbacks but not coverage.
Correct.
That's the only, I just saw the cantilever and when I said 100%, I wasn't sure.
Cantilevers are always included in your lot coverage. You can buy, get the two feet with setbacks, but not, it doesn't.
But even then, at 22, if it wasn't, we're good. But I was just thrown off by the 100%, that's why.
Right.
Okay, I'm good.
All set, go ahead. Charlie, could you read? Anyone else on this board have any questions? Okay, Charlie, could you read?
Nothing from any abutters that I'm aware of.
How about, so nothing?
We have Conservation and we have.
Nothing DPW.
Both of which have been.
Okay. Mr. Morris is not here. Audience input. Anybody in the audience having anything to say about this application? Seeing none. Any other board questions? Seeing none.
Building thing, but it's not, it's not relevant to.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, who's?
I'll second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion in reference to the application, please.
Okay, motion relative to 48 Greenwood Road. Owner Joyce A. Marsters, trustee of the Greenwood Trust, requests a special permit under 17417.1, 174-33, and 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling with a new, single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district and the Pompanasset Overlay District Map 117 Parcel 323 Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Laws 40A Section 9. Number two, site plan: Prepared for Greenwood Trust, Joyce Marsters, trustee, 48 Greenwood Road Sheet Number 1 of 1, date March 15, 2024, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Matthew Costa, Number 52282, and Mark Dibb, Number 45937. Design plans: Prepared for 48 Greenwood Road Sheet 1 of 3, date 3/12/24. A1 elevations, A2 first and second floor plans, A3 foundation plan prepared by Fine Line Design. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments previously read. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Town Planner's Review in reference to the Tree Bylaw, Chapter 175 of the Town Bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. And number seven, the board finds that under 17417.1 and 17433 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood, that there is sufficient parking and there are no new non-conformities being created.
My second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Everything Pompanasset, huh?
They're all jumping on the bandwagon because they know what's coming.
Oh, yeah. They're putting these monster houses.
Everybody's just jumping on getting these things approved, is it? It's town meeting, I guess. Goes to vote, so what happens? If they come up to another town meeting? Tried before.
Yeah.
Okay. So Charlie, would you read the next new hearing, which is 58 Beers Road?
58 Beers Road. 58 Beers Road. Owner Joan F. Flanagan requests a special permit under 17417.1 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling with a new, single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district and the Pompanasset Overlay District Map 117 Parcel 33 Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Joan Flanagan. Joan Flanagan has applied for a special permit to raise and replace a single-family residential structure, pre-existing, non-conforming, with a new, single-family structure pursuant to 174-17.1. Once again, this property is located within the Pompanasset Overlay District. So your minimum dimensional requirements are 6,000 square feet of lot area, 60 feet of frontage, 25 front yard setback, 15 side and rear, 25% lot coverage, and 50 feet from any wetland resource area. This lot has four non-conformities, so this is not wholly, but partially, within land subject to coastal storm flowage. So we have a lot coverage non-conformity at 69%. We have a setback to wetland of zero, and both our side yard setbacks are non-conforming. The southerly side is seven feet and the northerly side is 10 and 1/2 feet. So both of those are non-conforming conditions. So what we are proposing to do is a, again, a knockdown and rebuild. The, both of the non-conformities to the sides will be improved. They will not be eliminated, but they will be improved. So we are going from 12, seven to 12 feet on the, on the south and, what was it? 10.5 to 13 on the north. So both of those are being improved. We are not creating any new non-conformities. We're not intensifying any of those setback non-conformities. Again, we're improving them. The lot coverage will be, the coverage as a percentage of total lot area will be 23.6%, which again is less than 25%. Drywells are being proposed. There's four of them shown on the plan. The, there's a shed on there that I believe is being stained.
So it's, it's. No, existing shed to be removed.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
So that shed would be non-conforming because it is more than 100 square feet. So it's being removed, so any non-conformities created by that shed are being eliminated. IA system is being proposed, and this project was approved by the Conservation Commission. And. I would just note that ultimately, the existing structure coverage is 1290 and we're going to 1490. So the actual structure increase in cover is only about 130 square feet. That's all that's really being increased by this project. So given that, the 17417.1 criteria are no new non-conformities, which there are none, sufficient parking, which there is, and not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. So again, we don't have a building code compliant house, we will have a building code compliant house. We don't have a flood zone compliant house, we will have a flood zone compliant house. There is no intensification of the existing non-conformities and no new ones will be created. The applicant will be putting in an IA system. The two existing side yard non-conformities will be improved. We have drywells. The overall coverage of structure is only increasing by 130 square feet, which renders a overall coverage of 23.6%. The non-conforming sheds being eliminated. And again, the proposed home is consistent with the neighborhood. And as always, I provide you pictures of some of the surrounding houses to show that it's consistent with the other redevelopment in the neighborhood. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions from this board.
Charlie, letters from agencies, please.
We have two, one from the Conservation, one from Board of Health. Relative to 58 Beers Road, Board of Health. House to remain three-bedroom. IA will be installed. Permit must be pulled, Board of Health Department. 58 Beers Road, relative to Conservation. Resource area, areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. NOI application for raise and replace of existing dwelling with installation of IA septic system. Previous driveway, drywells, hardscape, and associated appurtenances. Application received approval at the April 18th hearing date with a vote of four to one. Those are the. Those are the only two that I perceive.
No other abutters or anything?
No abutters, nothing else.
Board questions?
No.
Nothing.
Nope.
Raul, are you using DEP and NOAA in your design criteria? Don't tell me DEP. Please. DEP, right? Good, thank you. All right. So no David Morris. Uh, audience input. Seeing none. Going to go back to board questions again?
No, good.
Seeing none. Okay. Motion to close public hearing. Have a second?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion in reference to the application?
I have a motion relative to fifty-eight Beers Road. Owner Joan F. Flanagan requests a special permit under one-seventy-four seventeen point one, one-seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling with a new single-family structure on property located in an R-three zoning district and the Papaneset overlay district, map one-one-seven, parcel thirty-three Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Laws forty A, section nine. Number two, site plan prepared for Thomas Jacobs and Joan F. Flanagan, Project Fifty-eight Beers Road Sheet number one of one, date February twenty, two thousand twenty-four, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Matthew Costa, number five-two-two-eight-two, and Mark Dibb, number four-five-nine-three-seven. Design plans prepared for Jacobs-Flanagan residence, Fifty-eight Beers Road Mashpee, Mass, scale one-quarter inch equals one foot, date four-four twenty-four, drawn by J.L.B., Sheet one. First floor and second floor plans, Sheet two. Floor plans and front elevation prepared by Jennifer Bernstil Acuplicity LLC. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain town planner's review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter one-seventy-five of the town bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. And number seven, the board finds under one-seventy-four seventeen point one and one-seventy-four dash thirty-three that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood, that there is sufficient parking and there are no new non-conformities being created.
I'll second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just go to the next sheet, right, Chris?
Chris has got them all.
Charlie, would you read the next new hearing, Sixty-One Shoestring Bay, please?
I will. Next new hearing is Sixty-One Shoestring Bay Road. Owner Sixty-One Shoestring Bay Road LLC requests a variance under one-seventy-four thirty-one, footnote one, and one-seventy-four thirty-three. Setback fifty feet from the nearest wetland resource area to construct a new single-family dwelling on the vacant lot located in an R-three zoning district, map eighty-four, parcel thirty-five Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening. Again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Sixty-One Shoestring Bay Road LLC. They are the owner of property at Sixty-One Shoestring Bay Road. This is one of, uh, one of probably the last vacant lots in Willow Bend, in this area, at least in the Shoestring Bay development, which was part of, uh, all these lots were approved plans back in the late nineties, I believe, they're all. A and R plans, uh, back in the day. So there is a coastal bank on site, which we cannot be fifty feet, get your fifty feet away from. So we need a fifty, we need a variance from your fifty-foot setback to wetland resource area. If you have been to this site, it is a severe slope from front to back. So I would certainly make the argument that there is a topographical hardship, given the severe slope of this lot. We would not be able to cite this house outside of the fifty-foot without being off, off the lot. Or, so, again, it is a severe slope. It's topography. Again, it's, we're not seeking any other variances. It's a vacant lot. Everything else will comply with your bylaws. It's just the fifty-foot setback to wetlands, and this was approved by the Conservation Commission at, I think, their, at one of their last meetings.
What I'd like to do is go through the normal procedure. I'll ask for comments, the whole thing. But I think we need to find the reason for the variance and agree on that first.
Yeah.
So why don't we do this? I think the best way to manage this is, does the board concur that because of the slope of the lot, this lot could be issued a variance? Not that it's going to be.
Yes.
Okay, so it's a consensus of the board. Does it, do you agree?
Yes.
Rest, all right. So it's a consensus of the board that variance could be applied for in reference to, for the reason of topography? That being said, so applicant's, so letters from agencies, Charlie, please?
Uh, two agencies, Board of Health and Conservation. Board of Health comments relative to Sixty-One Shoestring Bay Road receives six-ten-twenty-four. Board of Health property is on private sewer. The Conservation Department comments dated June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, relative to Sixty-One Shoestring Bay Road. Resource areas: salt marsh, coastal bank, and land subject to coastal storm flowage. NOI application for construction of a single-family dwelling with pool, patio, retaining wall, garage with driveway, associated landscaping, hardscaping, mitigation plantings, and invasive control. NOI was approved at the March twenty-first hearing date with conditions for weekly reports of retaining wall construction, bi-weekly staff agent inspection, pool drawn down by pump truck only, and a three-year mitigation and monitoring contract with a certified professional with a vote of three to one.
Any other letters, Charlie?
Nothing else.
No one. I noticed that the board enacted a regulation that the pool had to be pumped down by truck only, not pumped like we were questioning the spa. Where's that water going? So we should think that. All right, so board questions?
Part of the conditions.
If it's pumped, it has to be...
Yeah, it's already in the order conditions, but I agree, but...
Well, if it's already in the...
Sorry, yeah. But it's just, it's good to note that in fact, someone else is questioning it. Hmm?
Belt and suspenders, Chris?
There you go.
Um, board questions?
Your point too, your question is, does Conservation review those types of issues? And clearly they give...
Yeah, no, and it's good to hear how they manage it. That was a good way to manage it. I thought, very good way to manage it. Board questions, if you have any? I will certainly come back to you. Um, Mr. Morris is not here. Audience questions, issues, or concerns? Anyone? Okay. I'm back to board questions. Why don't we take our time and make sure everything's okay?
Yeah, I'm taking it pretty good.
Scott, you all right?
I, bedrooms don't matter because it's...
Sure. Everybody all right with the application?
I am.
No, question, uh, what's the lot coverage on this?
It's under, it's twenty percent. So it meets, I don't need a variance for lot coverage.
And the lot's big enough, right?
The lot is big enough.
It's a vacant lot, right?
Yep, it is vacant lot, it is big enough.
Sounds good. Okay. And it's, I assume it's wooded now?
Yes.
And a cutting at all would have to be...
That's already going to be in the conditions.
Correct.
It's all done, right?
Yeah, I think the way the, the tree bylaw is stated that the planner doesn't have to, it's exempt because it goes through Conservation.
Well, I would presume that you're gonna, if you were to make a motion, Charlie, it's, it's also inclusive of the tree bylaw, right?
Right.
I think we have to include that in all of them.
I would think you're correct.
I do too.
Setbacks are all fine, except for the rear setback, right?
The setback to wetland, not, the rear setback's fine. It's the setback to wetland, the fifty-foot. Everything else is, has to conform to your bylaws.
I think this lot...
It's approximately twenty thousand square feet. So as part of the, as again, it was, it was approved under the Shoestring Bay development back in the nineties.
What is the amount of the variance requested?
Uh, it's fifty feet I need to, where...
Fifty feet?
It's the total fifty.
Yeah, the coastal bank runs right through...
So when you make a motion, it should be you're requiring relief of fifty feet?
Right, right. Yep, but the resource area runs...
Good question, Charlie.
Runs through the middle of...
Yeah. So he's asking for total relief?
Yes.
So the minimum lot's size is forty thousand, so this is...
It's a grandfather lot.
Because of its format?
Yes.
And ownership because it's not owned in common?
Correct. Which is a building department.
Which is not our issue.
Not ours, it's David's.
Unless it becomes our issue. I hope it doesn't.
I should.
And the height's fine?
Yep.
Yeah, it's just under...
All right.
Okay, motion to close pub, anyone else all set? Motion to close, please?
Who moved?
Second? I already asked the audience, they're like, no one. No one wants to talk to me tonight, or us. So do I have a second on the closing of the motion? Okay. All who's in favor?
Aye.
All right, so motion in reference to the approval of the...
Okay, motion relative to Sixty-One Shoestring Bay Road. Owner Sixty-One Shoestring Bay Road LLC requests a variance under one-seventy-four thirty-one, footnote one, and one-seventy-four thirty-three. Setback fifty feet from the nearest wetland resource area to construct a new single-family dwelling on the vacant lot located in an R-three zoning district, map eighty-four, parcel thirty-five Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a variance under Mass. General Laws forty A, section ten. Number two, site plan prepared for Sixty-One Shoestring Bay Road LLC, date twelve-twelve, two thousand twenty-three, scale one inch equals twenty feet, prepared by WRS Engineering, stamped and signed by Roy Okarowski, PE, number four-one-four-five-eight. Number three, design plans prepared for Sixty-One Shoestring Bay Road, job number two-two oh-six, date April one, two thousand twenty-four. Sheet A-one, lower level plan A-two, first floor plan A-three, second floor plan A-four, elevations A-five, elevations prepared by Architect Associates. Condition on, excuse me, all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to Conservation Department and Board of Health comments. Condition that the applicant seek and obtain town planner's review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter one-seventy-five of the town bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. And number six, the board issues a variance in the amount of fifty feet under section one-seventy-four thirty-three.
I'll second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Coming back.
Yep.
Charlie, will you read the, would you please read the next new hearing into the record? Sixty-two Whippawill Circle.
I will. Sixty-two Whippawill Circle. Owner Eric N. Saranen requests a special permit under one-seventy-four seventeen point one to raise and replace an existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new code-compliant single-family dwelling on property located in an R-three zoning district, map one-two-five, parcel one-eight-three, Mashpee, Mass.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Eric Saranen, uh, owner of the property at sixty-two Whippawill Circle. Uh, so, as the hearing notice, uh, is read, uh, we are seeking a special permit to raise and rebuild on the pre-existing, non-conforming, uh, single-family residence under one seventy-four dash seventeen point one. Uh, this property is located in your R three zoning district, and so that requires forty thousand square feet of lot area, uh, forty-foot, uh, front yard setback, uh, twenty percent lot coverage, fifteen-foot side and rear setbacks, uh, and a fifty-foot setback to wetland, if applicable. In this particular case, we have a thirteen thousand fifty-four square foot lot, however, it is wholly located within land subject to coastal storm flowage. So for zoning purposes, we have zero, uh, setback to the wetland, we have a hundred percent lot coverage, um, and we have zero square feet of lot area, uh, for your zoning purposes. There is also a non-conformity to Whippawill Circle, where we are only thirty-nine feet off of the, uh, front yard, where we need to be forty. So that is your other, uh, non-conformity. So what we are proposing is a, uh, raise and rebuild. We are not increasing the overall coverage of structure. So as a percentage of the total lot area, the, the existing coverage is sixteen, uh, percent, and is going to continue to be sixteen percent. So there is no increase in overall structure coverage. Uh, I think it actually goes down by one square foot, looking at it. Um, this has been approved by Conservation with some significant mitigation and restoration. Uh, an IA system is being, uh, proposed, and also, uh, the front yard setback is being eliminated. So we are currently non-conforming. This project will make that forty-foot conforming. So we're eliminating that non-conformity. So again, under one seventy-four seventeen point one, as this board knows, we need to show that there are no new non-conformities created. In this case, there are no new non-conformities created. Um, there is sufficient parking. Residential zones require two parking spaces, and we have enough parking for two cars, and it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And that argument that I would make to this board, that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, because we have a non-building code-compliant house, and we're gonna be building code-compliant. We have a, a non-flood zone compliant house, and we're going to have a flood zone compliant house. There is an IA fast denitrification system being proposed. Uh, the project has been approved by the Conservation Commission, with, uh, which is inclusive of, uh, significant, uh, onsite mitigation and restoration. Drywalls are being installed, and there is no increase in your structure coverage. And the, the existing front yard setback is being eliminated. And also, again, as always, I provide you pictures of some of the surrounding homes in the neighborhood to demonstrate that this would not be, uh, inconsistent with other development in the neighborhood. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
Charlie, letters from anyone, please?
No, uh, no letters from any, uh, butters. They wrote, uh, comments relative to the Board of Health and Conservation. Board of Health, uh, dated six-ten-twenty-four, indicates three-bedroom house. Updated septic plans with water line must be submitted to Health Department Permit Application. And Conservation Commission comments dated June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, sixty-two Whippawill Circle. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. NOI application for raise and replace of existing, single-family dwelling with attached garage, drywells, and upgrade to an IA septic system. Application was approved at the April eighteenth hearing with condition to increase naturally vegetated area to original twenty-two point five percent of lot and lawn not to be over ten percent of property lot with a vote of four to one.
Anything else, Charlie?
Nothing else.
Board questions? I have one. You stated there's an AI system?
Yes.
Where you haven't obtained Conserva-, uh, Board Health approval?
Well, IA system being proposed.
Okay. What's important, though, is if Charlie reads his, his motion is no change of that plan, and that plan depicts, does that plan depict a system?
Yeah, it depicts an IA system.
If Board Health changes that plan, that system, you gotta come back to this board.
But yes, it depicts an IA system.
I'm just-
I know.
Be careful, please.
Yep, absolutely.
So you're comfortable with, yeah, the way the Board of Health has indicated it now?
Yes.
That there will be, okay.
I'm not a, I'm not a hundred percent sure where it is in the process with Board Health, but that is what, an IA system is proposed.
Okay. Any other board questions?
Uh, what's the proposed height?
I looked at the house. I don't know if it's on the, it's on-
Yeah, but the old house is coming down, right?
It's got twenty-five-ten from, from average grade.
Remember, we had an issue in this area, right?
Oh, yeah. Your height, uh-
The street, I think.
Yeah, but this is just a cape. It's not really that tall.
The R three is thirty-five feet. Oh, and this is under, under that thirty-five feet.
Okay, and how many drywells are going in?
I believe, uh, Mr. Bunker, who unfortunately is not here tonight, uh, he's got one, two, three, four. He's got four drywells showing up.
Mr. Bunker doesn't show any overflows. Is Mr. Raoul in the audience? There you go. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Not for me.
Okay, Mr. Morris is not here. Um, audience, anyone in the audience having to say about this application? Okay. Back to the board, anybody on the board have any questions, again?
Not for me.
Want me to slow it down a little bit, John, you may have some questions before I close?
No, I'm good.
Well, we just think a little bit, I don't wanna be too quick.
No, I mean, the only question I might have, because these plans are hand drawn and so is- Attorney Corain, it says twenty-five-ten from elevation ten. Do we know if that's from average grade? I mean, I'm not too concerned, his house is too tall, it's not that big a house.
Well, we could make sure when someone made a motion that we wanna make certain that the height requirement is met.
Is it thirty or thirty-five over there?
Thirty-five. Thirty-five.
Yeah, but that house, that house was much taller than this.
You mentioned that.
The one that had the issue.
Yeah.
And he also raised the foundation up without anyone's approval. I'm just dotting i's, basically, Chris, um-
Yeah, the roof off.
I don't know if he has average grade on here. Cause it is, it's just written on there, elevation ten is grade, and twenty-five-ten is the height of the house. Which, wait a minute, yeah, seven- Twenty-five-ten.
Is it a flat lot? Chris?
I'm sorry.
Is it a flat lot?
Um, it's relatively flat from side to side. Um, I'm just looking at the elevations for-
I mean, we can condition it, the house can't be over thirty-five feet.
I mean, Dave's gonna review it, and if the board wants that-
Having grade.
Yeah, it's just, I don't see anything clear here.
Right.
That says what average grade is.
Yeah, it's pretty flat. The picture that Sharon's showing is pretty flat.
Yeah. But certainly the board can condition on making sure, you know, having the building department confirm that.
If you were asked to make a motion, Charlie, just make sure it's in there.
I just don't know if that twenty-five-ten is-
Looks like it's from the tenth-
The elevation?
I think it's the height.
That can't be, cause that would be fifteen, no, that doesn't make sense.
Right.
So we're at thirty-five-ten if-
If that's, if that's what it means.
Elevation thirty-five-ten, but the house can't be more than thirty-five, I don't know what average grade is.
I think it's twenty-five-ten is the height, and so it'd be at elevation thirty-five-ten, but the height is twenty-five-ten.
But as long as the house isn't more than thirty-five feet above average grade.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know if elevation ten is average grade. And like I said, there's so much room for play there that I don't think it's an issue. I just figured just test-
Include it in the motion and the building-
Do we want that on the plan, or do we want written confirmation?
I would just say that we bring to the, the, um, the attention of, uh, David, that in fact, uh, we're concerned about, uh, height, and that he needs to make sure-
Average grade needs to be noted on the plan, and the ridge height needs to be noted on the plan.
There you go. You can just put that in the motion, and if there were to be one made, and at that point, we cover, we cover that.
John's right, we did have an issue on that street.
Anybody else on the board have any questions? Sharon?
Nope.
Right, I would just suggest to the board that, at the time when they apply for the building permit, that those plans show existing average ga-, grade in the height.
And the compliance there, too.
Yep.
That's all. Um, alright, that being said, motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those a favor?
Aye.
Alright, do I have a motion in reference to the overall application?
I will do it. Uh, number sixty-two Whippawill Circle. Owner, Eric N. Saranen, requests a special permit under one seventy-four seventeen point one to raise and replace an existing, single-family dwelling and replace it with a new code-compliant, single-family dwelling on property located in an R three zoning district, map one-twenty-five, parcel one-eight-three, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Number one, board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Law's forty A, section nine. Two, site plan, proposed house reconstruction, sixty-two Whippawill Circle, prepared for Eric Saranen's, scale one inch equals twenty feet, date March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Revisions, revised tree locations, add trees to be planted to plan, show water main and service, April two, two thousand twenty-four. Sheet one of two, prepared by BSS Design, stamped and signed by Thomas Bunker, number three-two-six-five-three. Three, design plans, prepared for Saranen residents, sixty-two Whippawill Circle, Mashpee, Mass, scale one-quarter inch equals one foot, date five-eleven-twenty-four, drawn by J W, prepared by Coastline Design, A one, frontal elevation A two, window notes A three, left slash right elevations A four, first floor plan A five, second floor plan. Conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited, uh, to the Conservation Department and Board of Health, um, that the average grade to be noted on plan uh, and written confirmation, confirmation that the elevation uh, not exceed thirty-five feet above grade.
Are you also, I'm sorry, go ahead, did you have a question? Um, you also putting in your motions that any changes to the plans?
Uh, that, that comes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So-
Sorry for interrupting.
Yep.
Thirty-five feet from average grade, not just from existing average.
Above average grade, I'm sorry.
Existing average grade.
Existing. So let me go back and start from the beginning on that. Uh, and if the average, the, um, existing average grade is to be noted on the plan and written confirmation that the elevation not exceed thirty-five feet above the existing average grade. Uh, number six, any changes to the plan will require the applicant to return to this board. And number seven, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Town Planner's Review in reference to the Tree Bylaw, chapter one-seventy-five of the Town Bylaws, prior to the application of the building permit. Uh, number eight, the board finds under one seventy-four seventeen point one and one seventy-four thirty-three that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure or used to either the town or the neighborhood, that there is sufficient parking, and there are no new non-conformities being created.
I'll second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Very good. You gonna stick around for?
Yes, I will.
For which one?
I don't know if I can call up Chris's chair. Well put.
Good evening.
One second, as soon as we get this piece of paper to her, we're all set.
Yidoki.
So, ready, sir?
Uh, good evening, uh, David Lawler, uh, on behalf of, um, the White Oak. We have Raoul, obviously, who you know well. Uh, just like to introduce my clients, Ralph and Jess Alfery, they're residents of the town of Mashpee, you know, raising their young family here, and are seeking, uh, this application under one seventy-four twenty-five-six thirteen. Um, this, uh, property, uh, is located, um, on seventy-second, seventy-seven Echo Road, which is in the industrial district. The applicant is seeking a contractor's yard.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, I apologize. I made a mistake.
Back up a little bit.
I made a mistake, Charlie had to read this in first.
Yeah, let me put the card before-
Oh, I apologize.
My mistake, my mistake. So Charlie, if you'd read that in, you're right.
Alright, and, um, next. Seventy-seven Echo Road, petitioner is White Oak Holdings LLC, requests a special permit under one seventy-four twenty-four C two and one seventy-four twenty-five G thirteen of the zoning bylaws to allow for a contractor, contact contractor yard on property located in an I one in the light industry overlay district, map nineteen, parcel three, uh, extension four, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Pamela M. Ganchami, trustee of the eighty-one Echo Road Realty Trust.
So sorry, sorry, I made a mistake?
Nope.
Please.
No, no prob-, again, David Lawler, just for the record. Um, the attorney representing White Oak and, and Raoul, uh, the, um, I'm not gonna go through that whole litany. Um, with respect to this application, um, a contractor's yard is allowed only in the industrial district, which obviously Echo Road, um, is in the middle of, and it is only allowed, um, with a special permit. Uh, it suggests to you that the, uh, application for you is in harmony with the, uh, Mashpee bylaw, and not more detrimental, uh, to the existing neighborhood, just to get the standard down. Uh, with respect to what we have going here, um, the, uh, Raoul has, um, been a lot more involved, uh, you know, obviously with, um, this process as the engineer, having met with plan review and design review. And this particular project, um, has had peer review, and we have instituted the recommendations made by the peer review, which essentially is, you know, brought on board to review, uh, what's going on uh, on, and looking at it from the, uh, the town of Mashpee standpoint. Um, there is no relief being sought, other than the special permit. There's no sideline setback, lot coverage, there's, everything is in conformity, um, with the application. Uh, my clients and Raoul have taken into consideration, you know, the concerns of the area. Um, and I, I understand that in this particular area, you wanna make sure that it's clean, it's kept up, it's professional. Uh, my clients are, uh, I, I've actually, um, had the pleasure of knowing Ralph and Jess through my own children, and, um, had them do work in my own yard. And, uh, Ralph's very, uh, well, the two of them are, are very, uh, fastidious people, uh, maintaining a, you know, a very high-end business. Um, and I've had conversations with them in that regard. I can go through the actual plan, I'll have, uh, Raoul do that, because that's what he does.
Good evening, for the record, Raoul Isardi, from Cape Analysis Engineering. Um, so the property is vacant, so what we're proposing to do is develop it as a contractor's yard. The majority of the site is gonna be a gravel surface material. We went through plan review and design review. Um, the proposed driveway is located to the southeast corner of the property. That apron of the driveway is gonna be paved for a width of thirty feet and a depth of about twenty-five feet from the existing edge of Echo Road. Um, during plan review, um, it was recommended that we do exaggerated berms on the site. So the two sides of this paved driveway is a two-foot berm, and not the typical one-foot cape-cut berm. But again, this is a, a thirty-foot wide driveway entry, which is greater than the typical twenty-four-foot wide driveway. Um, immediately following that paved driveway, we have a, a stone apron, which is necessary for construction purposes and, and site clearing and, and leveling of the property. But also, it was conditioned or recommended, and we accept that as a condition, that it becomes a permanent gravel pad, uh, for vehicles exiting and entering the site. The drainage is concentrated in the front of the property. We're grading the whole property from the back to the front, and we have a drain basing completely at the front, um, quarter, portion of the property. It is typical with all these, um, industrial sites that you've seen, um, around town. All along the two sides of the property, the left and the right side, we have constructed berms, earth berms, elevated, um, earth berms, and planted with vegetation. On the rear of the property, we also have a planted, um, buffer proposed, um, for a, a width of ten feet. We don't have a berm on the back of the property, since the back of the property is the highest point, we don't need to, um, shed off any off-site runoff. Um, the property is gonna be divided into material storage bins, so we have that located to the left of the property. Um, on the right side of the property, we have, um, the access to all these bins, and we also have, um, the area where the equipment for the business is gonna be, um, parked. We did receive the peer review comments two days ago. We reviewed it with the, um, developer and the property, um, owner. Um, what they agree is to comply with those recommendations or, um, introduce those recommendations. We did some, submit a letter in response to those comments. And if I could, um, briefly touch on some of those comments. There were roughly four comments listed, but comment number four was split into two. So in, in total, there's five comments. Comment number one was for the test pits to be shown on the plan. The test pits are on the plan. The test pits, as, as noted on the plan, are the test pits done for Lot seven, which is the abutting property to the left. And there is the four test pits on the left side of, of the plan, which is on that property. Um, the second comment was that the drainage system, designed for the one-hundred-year storm, reaches an elevation of eleven point ninety-nine. What the, um, peer review wanted us to do is to add a one-foot, um, freeboard for any other potential bigger storm. That is done by taking the whole design and just sinking it a foot. We need the, the soil that we're gonna be digging, so we have no problem with sinking the whole system one foot. We're gonna be building berms along both sides of the property. That material comes handy in the, the construction of those two berms. So we incorporate that to the design. Another recommendation for the drainage. We have, on the two sides, we have two riprap, um, waterways, two, into the drainage. What the peer review recommended is connecting those two side riprap waterways with a four-foot wide, um, gravel strip that connects one to the other. We incorporate that into the design. The point number four, which is split into two, uh, I already touched on, on the one about the, the drip strip or, or the stone trip connecting the two waterways. Point number B, having to do with a concrete pad. Um, this is something that was first, um, brought up at design review, um, and now the peer review also make, makes comment on providing, uh, a surface for parking the vehicles that is impervious. So either concrete or pavement. So the applicant agrees to do a twenty-five-foot by a hundred-foot, um, paved area at the back of the property, and that will be the location for, for parking their, um, equipment. Um, and also have, uh, a spill kit, um, designated for this property in case there is any spills, uh, on the, on the paved pad, that it can be used to rectify the situation. So that's, that's the project, and if there's any questions. I do have revised plans with me, I know that this is day of the hearing, but if the board wants to see them, I do have them. Um, we did receive those comments from the peer review two days ago. We were working on this, this, this- We were working on this, these changes yesterday, but we can accommodate all of those recommendations. Thank you.
Let me go to letters, and then we'll go to the board, because there's some letters that need to be read. Charlie, could you read those, please?
Yeah, I have nothing from either Board of Health or from Conservation. What we do have is we have a report by Edward Pesci to the zoning Board of Appeals dated June 9, 2024, which basically parallels the discussion that we just heard in terms of what was initially proposed and what was agreed to. Nothing from anybody else.
I have several questions, but I want to hold one board question.
Yeah, do we have the comments from the plan review, any bullet points at all? Did we read those in or anything? Are they? Okay. Help me out here. Do I remember there was an issue you wanted to put some storage lockers or bins or something? Talk to me about that. What happened?
The original application that was filed with design review and plan review, there was trailer proposed, so containers.
Right.
During plan review, which we continued one, the first time to a second time, it was made, the finding was brought up by the town planner that pods are not, pods or similar features are not allowed in the groundwater discharge.
I-1 district.
Area. So that was, the applicant agreed to remove that completely from the, from the project. So that is no longer part of the project.
Okay, that was my only question.
So there's a history here, and I need to begin from the, from the very beginning, which is I attended, I think, the plan review board meeting, or was it plan review or site plan review? The one that I said.
Design review. Design review.
And I, I remain very concerned about Zone 2 and groundwater discharge area, right? Groundwater protection zone. And so, um, that's why I called Mr. Pesci. And this is, your drainage system is totally different than the last application, which is a non-payment pavement situation, which was, let's say, the Marina, in that you're putting whatever you're catching directly into the ground.
Not specifically, no.
Well, you're catching it, so what you're doing is you're sloping from the back to the front. You're putting it into a catchment area. You're not treating it in any way.
So the drain basin is considered treatment? We have two end sections with stone checks, which is considered treatment. Then we have the main basin. Then we have the infiltration, which is subsurface, which is after two feet of the basin filling in. So all of that is pre-treatment prior to the infiltration.
Well, yes, here's the question. Let's, let's cut to the chase. Let's say that there is a hydraulic or an oil leak of some sort in a machine. Being in Zone 2 groundwater protection district, how do we make sure that that doesn't get into our groundwater? Because it's not going into a, it's not going into a oil-water separator. It's not going anything with a hood on it. It's not going to anything that'll give us minutes, hours, seconds, whatever it may be, to capture it and reclaim it. Nothing.
So right, that's, that was the comment from Ed Pesci's report on section 4B.
And I think you haven't covered it in your reply, and I'll tell you why you haven't covered it. Because if you look at his last reply, he said to you, I believe, and I spoke to him two hours ago roughly, that he wanted to have a catchment area, concrete, and he's not, he's not concerned whether it's asphalt. So if there were a, an issue, whether it be, whatever it may be, hydraulic oil, whatever it is, that it had some time for us, the town, whoever, to deal with the situation. And that would be a simple concrete, asphalt, oil-water, it's pitched to the center, let's say, oil-water separator, done. I don't think you dealt with that correctly.
So the, the comment from Ed Pesci said.
Well, I, I see how he wrote it. I'm saying to you.
So what he recommended was a, an emergency spill kit?
I, I get that the spill kit is, is a supplying of a piece of equipment. And I'm saying to you that, I'm telling you right now that it is my opinion that your 4B has not been dealt with correctly in its entirety with Mr. Pesci. That's my concern. See, I'm trying to strike a balance with the applicant and the town to protect the town, town's water supply in a Zone 2 and a groundwater protection district, and not be overly burdensome on the applicant, right? Because he has to run a business. I get it. I understand completely. But I don't believe we've struck the adequate balance to protect the side of the town in the Zone 2. And I don't believe Mr. Pesci is of that opinion. Is it, I believe Mr. Pesci is of that same opinion. So my point to the board is this. This needs to be looked at. I was hoping that this letter was going to simply say for Mr. Pesci and you, but by the way, hasn't seen your comments yet, and I get it. You just got them two days ago. I was hoping that today's meeting was going to be a simple everybody thumbs up and done, but where I don't think we're there yet.
Can I, can I jump in on that regard?
Certainly.
As, and I know this isn't part of the application process, but my client has it under a purchase and sale agreement, and if, if it goes to an, into late July, it's going to cause a huge problem. So I don't know if there's any type of condition that we could, you know, or something that would satisfy the board where we might be able to get a vote tonight.
Well, let me help you with that, because I did something that I probably shouldn't have, okay? And that was to talk to Mr. Pesci, Pesci, for you, for this application, not you, this application, to try and move it along.
No, and I appreciate that. I'm not.
And so I should have asked this board to approve Mr. Pesci first, but I didn't, because at my meeting that I had, I saw this headed in that direction, and I tried to get it so it could get moved. And so we've already moved it pretty quickly.
No, and I don't, and I'm not.
I mean, this would have gone without this. It would have been a hiring of Pesci, dollars and cents, another meeting. We're a meeting ahead.
I, no, no, and I, and I know it's a big ask.
And I think, and I have a couple other questions. The reply states that there's going to be very little hydraulic fluid and very, and there's not going to be any fueling of machines on the, on the site.
Yes.
How do you plan on, um, it says that you're going to have a chip, wood chip area, compost pile, and a hardwood pile. How are you going to load that equip, that material?
So that is when they go to the sites, to the particular jobs, to do work, tree cutting, tree removal, and what have you, they do all that processing on-site. They cut the trees, they load it onto the trucks, they wood chip everything on, on those trucks. They bring those trucks into this facility, and they move those logs or wood chips into the specific.
Bin.
Bins.
And then that, then a loader comes in and picks it up, I presume, and puts it in a truck?
There's no loader proposed.
So how do you get that material out of there? How do you get that material out of the bin? I'm missing something. It's awful heavy to, it's, it would take a long time with a shovel.
We would have a machine that would remove it.
Which would be a loader.
So.
Okay, so some form of equipment that's going to have a bucket on the front of it to do this and do that.
But they're, they're agreeing to fill that up, but they have a trailer.
No, no, what I'm getting to is the reply was, oh, we're not going to have any equipment on the site that's going to be fueled on the site, so you're going to take that loader and bring it to the gas station and fuel it?
Yeah.
No.
Come on.
No, no, no. Here's my point. This needs some.
A front-end loader, you're going to a gas station?
It's not a, it's not a front-end loader as even construction equipment. It's the little one.
So it's a skid steer that you're either going to bring your pickup truck with a fuel oil container in the back and, and oil, and fuel it up?
Right, the, the business, when they go to sites and they need to gas up, they stop at the gas stations and that's how.
They bring the skid steer with them to site so they can fill it up offsite.
So now we're at this site, and you now have a pile of wood chips and/or compost or hardwood sitting there, and you're going to now putting it onto a truck to do something with it. That machine, whether it be skid steer or loader, you're not going to bring it to a gas station. You're either going to have it fueled up there, or you're going to take your pickup with the fuel tank in the back, and you're going to fuel it up like that. All it takes is one gallon to ruin a million gallons of our, you know, of our groundwater.
If I can, I just talked to the applicant, and this is the one thing that I think, Ron, you're trying to get to. So this board hasn't seen this plan, so this plan, this backside is the area that we're proposing to pave.
Say again, please?
This is the area that we're proposing to pave.
Okay, yes.
So what the applicant agrees to do is probably something that you were touching on. It's creating a low point here. So everything pitches to a low point and creating an oil grid separator, installing an oil grid separator with a discharge pipe that goes to the basin. So that will control and collect any spills from the area that the material or the equipment is stored at.
What you're saying then, if you were to fuel up of that piece of equipment, you'd move it on to that area right there. And I'm, I'm saying the better way to manage this is to not say that you're not going to fuel, but fuel, tell us you're going to fuel, because I think you will. Show us how you're going to do it and protect the groundwater, and do it. My point is, is if you were to use that as a fueling area, or if you had a hydraulic leak, hopefully get the machine over there quick enough so that it would be captured before going to our groundwater, that would make sense. Second note, though, and more importantly, is I think this has to be looked at, and maybe we can condition it, I don't know, because frankly, if Pesci, Mr. Pesci didn't look at this, we're looking at, the TSS had to be adjusted, right?
Right, so.
If we didn't have Mr. Pesci look at it, the TSS wouldn't have been adjusted. So I, I believe the TSS need to be adjusted because we needed more stor, more volume to deal with the TSS, correct?
No, so the TSS has nothing to do with the volume.
No, I know that. The total suspended solids were an issue that had to be dealt with because we didn't have enough capacity to deal with the TSS because of the computation. Am I correct?
So no, capacity and TSS are two different things.
I agree. It's not, I'm using the wrong language.
Okay.
The TSS removal, how's that?
Right, so TSS removal, what he recommended is the four-foot strip?
Well, because we didn't have enough TSS removal in the plan already. That's what he said to me. I'm not, I don't, one thing I can't do is I don't, I don't do TSS, you know, research. I mean, I do do drainage studies, as you know, but I don't do TSS. And so luckily, we went to Mr. Pesci. Mr. Pesci did the TSS, and he said that we had to, you had to increase that area to deal with the TSS, correct?
Right, and we agreed to his recommendation to get to the TSS removal.
Only reason I'm saying is if we didn't, if we didn't go the route of peer review with Mr. Pesci, we'd have a plan today that wouldn't be dealing with TSS in its, in its capacity, right? We would have been short on its, on its capacity, the TSS.
Right. The regulation doesn't have a specific TSS removal. He recommended a 44% TSS removal. And that's what he suggested, and that's why we revised the plan too.
Well, all right, if you want to depict it that way, fine. Here's my point in this whole thing. This is what I'd recommend to the board. And I, I understand the applicant. I, again, I'm trying to strike a balance so that a gentleman who's starting a business can get his business going and make a living, but I also have to protect his town.
Oh, no, and I, and I respect that.
And you know what? And the last thing I want to see is somebody going business, and we rush them into that business, and all of a sudden we have a problem. We ruin it. We, we impact negatively our groundwater. That's not, that can't happen. So that being said, I took a leap of faith with Mr. Pesci before even having another meeting, so we're a meeting ahead right now.
And I appreciate that tremendously.
We are. My attitude is, is Mr. Pesci has to say to this board, thumbs up, because this is groundwater protection, and this, you know, this is imperative for us. It's imperative that we, that Mr. Pesci gives us a thumbs up. He has not seen these answers yet.
Could we do a, and I know this is a big ask, a vote on a conditional approval that the groundwater separation that Raul just spoke about be added to the plan? And that Mr. Pesci, you know, if he can approve the plan, and then.
I would have no problem as the chair of this board recommending to the board to make a vote subject to Mr. Pesci's total sign-off of the site. Sign-off of the site and an inspection of the site prior to its occupancy, meaning construction sign-off.
We have no problem with that whatsoever.
I would have no problem recommending to this board, but Mr. Pesci has to say this on this site.
Absolutely.
And I'm not going to just, I'm not just going to say, you know, the specific issue of, you know, oil-water separators, whatever. He has to.
Total sign-off.
He has to say, I'm happy with the design, and, and I think you've gotten through many of them. I think you'll get there.
Mr. Pesci has a reasonable reputation, so I have no issue with that whatsoever, none. And I would ask that it be approved, conditioned upon that, and that, and I understand. I, you know, I go down to Echo, I, I don't live in Mashpee, but I go down to Echo Road a lot on various stuff, because it's a great little area, an industrial area. And, no, and I understand your concerns, and I, and you're trying to protect the residents of Mashpee. So we have no issues with any of this. My clients are residents. They're raising their kids here. They want the groundwater to be clean.
Again, I, I hope they get in business. They make a lot of money, and they do very well. And, and, but I, sitting in this seat right here, that's secondary, but certainly important to me.
Ron, I still have some questions about the, about the skid steers. You only have, you're only going to have one skid steer?
So the business has several vehicles, so they have, they have several vehicles. They have pickup trucks.
Several vehicles.
They have box trucks. They have a bucket equipment to get up on the trees.
An end loader.
They have, they have a chopper.
They have the skid steers.
A skid steer.
It's a Bobcat.
Okay.
It's an existing business. This isn't a new business. He's just moving.
Right, so there's only going to be one Bobcat?
It's all he has now. I mean, I, I.
So when the Bobcat's out doing work, and somebody comes in and wants to load a loom.
They're not in that, they're not in that business. They don't sell that. They're not in that business.
He's the tree guy.
He's a tree person. He comes, he's not selling firewood. He's, he's just coming. He's storing this stuff, keeping it on lot, and then moving it to another commercial site.
Let me help you, Jonathan. This may help you, because it comes up to me too. Yeah, oh yeah, no question. So Mr. Pesci and I, he's going to call me when you call him to interact with him. He's going to call me after, and I'll tell you why. Here's some of the questions we're going to have Mr. Pesci. I got to say, Ed, so it's a growing business. I hope he has, instead of one skid steer a year from now, 20 skid steers, but how do we protect the groundwater for those 20 skid steers? How do we make sure that this pad that you're, that we're depicting on this plan is adequate for 30 skid steers? Those are the things that Mr. Pesci is going to talk to you about, and have to, you're going to have to deal with. Because I agree with you, Jonathan, that one skid steer that's working over there, he buys another skid steer, and all of a sudden he's got two or three more skid steers. Who knows what's going on?
Well, I mean, the lot wouldn't, the lot wouldn't justify that. I mean, it's, this is a lot where, and maybe it's my fault for not explaining the business a little bit. Alfieri Tree Care is a tree care company. They come in, they cut down trees, they plant trees, they do this, they do that. They're not out there selling loom or anything to the, no general public is coming in here. This is just used by the professionals, and they're coming in and they're using this, you know, for storage or whatnot. If we needed to come down the road and make any changes to the lot, we understand we have to come back before this board.
So they bring back wood chips, right?
Bring back wood chips, bring back logs.
Okay, and they.
Store other materials. Yes.
Where do they go from there?
They load them up, and they either put them on.
That's a point, right there.
They load them up, and they load them up, and they.
So.
And what, where.
They put them in a truck, and they remove them, and they go wherever they go.
So.
What do you mean? They sell them, or they throw them away?
Some of the logs do go out for disposal, final disposal at an offsite location. Some of them get sent to mills to get processed for lumber.
In other words, it's being sold?
But not in this location. They're just taking them away.
They're just loading them up.
I understand that.
They're being stored there, but they're being picked up by the same company that put them there. So Mr. Alfieri is loading them up on trucks. He's loading them up on trucks, and they're shipping them out, so they're coming, so they're coming in and out. You know, it's, they're.
So they could be coming in and out all the time when the skid steer is not around?
No, because he's going to be the one that's going to do it.
It's not a private, he's not having a.
You see where I'm calling this?
I don't know, I don't know where you're going with that.
I understand, and so that's why I think it isn't, just so you understand, it isn't going to be the answering of just these questions that I have from Mr. Pesci right now. There's, there's going to be a couple others that are going to be possibly added to this, this realm. I don't believe any of them are insurmountable, and I don't think any of them are going to be hugely problematic, but there's more questions that need to be answered in this lot.
But I mean, the one thing.
Also, there'll be no gasoline whatsoever on this property? Is that what you're telling me?
I don't know. Does the skid steer use diesel or gas? I don't know.
The vehicles have fuel.
They'll be inside the vehicles.
Right, so there won't be any extra hanging around?
No, not to, that might.
You need fuel storage. He's, he's not, he can't have fuel storage.
Well, I'm more concerned about diesel fuel.
If you want to make a requirement that we, if there is, if there is refueling, we will agree that any refueling happen on that pad, and then that pad be designed in such a way that Mr. Pesci's.
Wait a minute, I thought you weren't going to refuel.
Well, you're saying that you want.
The chairman indicated that, he talked about in the future, if there was going to be refueling, if there is going to be refueling.
What I'm saying is I don't want you to refuel on this site, just to refuel anywhere in this site. If you're going to refuel, I want it controlled to the degree where you're going to refuel at a certain location.
If there's any, we, right now, like as you say, things change.
I just don't, I just know, having a skid steer, heavy equipment myself, when you have skid steers, those, you don't put them on that trailer and bring them to an area to have them fueled. You fuel them wherever they. those, you don't put them on that trailer and bring them to an area to have them fueled, you fuel them wherever they are. It's just the way it is, I mean, I don't know why you'd do it any other way. Now, if you go to your business, maybe you will stop at a fuel station in the way, but if it's staying in the yard, then you take the fuel off the back of your pickup truck and fuel it up.
Well, I think the skid steer goes with him on a daily basis.
Yeah, but I mean, it may stay in the yard for a week, and you're not gonna then load it up to bring it down to the station, hopefully you got a fuel in the back of your truck, right, your pickup, and just fuel it up. You just don't, I just.
What I'm saying is, so with you saying that, we would agree that if there was refueling on-site, it would be done so only on that pad that has a fuel separation system involved.
Totally understood. These are the things that an engineer needs to deal.
We would put that into the order.
These are the things that an engineer needs to look at to make sure that you're meeting the criteria that, in his opinion, will protect the ground. Now, the question is, is how do we manage it from here to there? I don't, I mean.
If you're comfortable with a conditional approval with Mr. Pesci, I'm, I would be comfortable.
It's up to this board, but I have no problem interacting with Mr. Pesci, and he and I making sure we cover every base we can think that we cover, and that if that way, the plans will, will reflect that. It's up to this board, though.
Pesci's not gonna sign off unless you agree with him, is that correct?
Yeah.
Because you're gonna be the voice of this board.
Which I really don't like.
He has the final say.
I get it, and I really don't like that, because frankly, there's enough intelligence on this board to come up with other issues than I'm gonna come up with. No, there is, I mean, you guys come up with, you ladies and gentlemen.
Where is she?
Basically, what we're looking for is, we're looking for Ed Pesci to tell us that the plan that's been submitted for what's gonna be done on this parcel of property is in full compliance of everything to protect the groundwater of the town of Mashpee. And that should include our questions about this. But I'm not sure I can sit here and say, well, what might happen a year and a half from now in terms of the use of the property? What might there be on the property then that could adversely affect our groundwater? I don't know.
It's hard for this board, because we're dealing with a vacant piece of property that is doing a minimal amount of work, although it could become a maximum amount of work, and we don't know from here to there how to get there. Because we don't know what he's gonna ultimately do, how many machines are gonna be there, what they're gonna.
All I wanna make sure of is, whatever comes down from an unnatural source on top of that ground doesn't go anywhere other than where we know it's gonna go, so it doesn't hurt anything. That's all.
I agree, and right now, as I said to Raul, right now, if it goes onto that ground, which by the way, you're gonna make it less impervious, right, most of the lot, because you're gonna harden it up so you can drive on it, right, I presume?
So, right, the majority of the.
I looked at your, I looked at your soil content that you plan on putting on it, and that is gonna have a certain amount of fines to harden it up, right?
So, right, it's a gravel base.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Except for what we're proposing to do, which is the one hundred by twenty-five paved section.
So, most of the lot is to become far less pervious, so that waters, whatever's gonna fall on, it's gonna sheet flow down to the front of this lot and go into that collection system that he's, that he's, you know, projecting. My concern, though, is, is the system that is shown today would put that water, whatever it is, water effluent, whatever you wanna call it, into the groundwater, would put it into the ground, non-treated. And I would entice you to look at our own groundwater protection regulations, because there's some porosity issues in there you to look at. Please take a look at them. Percentage of lot coverage and porosity, just, just take a look at them. I'm not so sure you're gonna be in total compliance, but just take a look at them. I'll go over with you later.
All right, and this is a groundwater protection area, isn't it?
That is.
It's not your average neighborhood.
No, 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 this is, this is groundwater protection zone two. This has state regulations, this has local bylaw regulations, it's covered with regulations, and I'm saying, if you look at groundwater, you know, you look at the groundwater protection regulations, if you look at Raul, look at, look at number four, the rendering impervious of greater than fifty percent of two thousand square feet or two thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet of lot, whichever is greater, you can't, isn't allowed unless you provide a collection system to deal with it. You haven't done that.
We have a collection system, and it's not impervious.
It hasn't dealt with, it hasn't dealt with management and artificial recharge of precipitation is developed within the designated to prevent untreated discharges. How are you, this plan right here, how are you treating untreated discharge? How are you dealing with untreated discharge?
So, that is the treatment, the drainage system is the treatment that we are proposing. So we have the basin preceding the subsurface leaching.
Per Mr. Pesci, your treatment process is not adequate.
So, what Pesci suggested is adding a gravel strip, but everything.
For the TSS.
But everything else, he did not.
Above and beyond that, he wants a collection system on this concrete or asphalt pad.
And we're agreeing to that.
That would be an oil-water separator, something that would collect it, above the, beyond the TSS.
Right, and that, I just talked to the applicant, and he agrees to do that for the.
That's, I, I, like I said, I think we can get there. I think this is something we can do. Just we're gonna deal with time, we're gonna make sure that we put an adequate amount of time in this to protect our community.
The, I mean, and it is, and it's an issue, I mean, obviously that, and obviously, the, when the industrial area was created, the groundwater issues weren't known as they are today, and, you know.
Well, one-third of that whole street, Echo Road, towards the back, is all in groundwater.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, I mean, when, when all that industrial area was created, the groundwater issue wasn't as, wasn't as prominent as is today.
I, I just kinda, if a front-end loader is being used, which it will be from time to time, you have to assume that at some point in time, a hydraulic hose may break on the front-end loader. So, what we're trying to do is, we don't know that it's gonna happen, but if it does, we need to be protected from it.
Absolutely, and that's why the, that's why they'll be parked on the concrete pad with the fuel separating system in it, and that will be part of the requirement, and if, and as you indicated previously, that all this, you know, if the, if the project grows to a point where they can't do that, they gotta come back before this board and have other changes.
I, I think the bottom line is, somebody above my, I'm not gonna speak for, my pay grade needs to look at this in depth. He's already looked at it, needs to spend some more time on it, and get this thing done, between the applicant's engineer and him, agree, get it done, and move forward. I mean, somebody above my pay grade needs to do that, it's not me.
So, I, like I said, I would, we would agree to the conditional approval if Mr. Pesci signs off, and then.
That's up to this board. I'm more than happy to put the time into it, I just don't like the liability breaker. I don't wanna be the guy that makes a bad decision and didn't push the right button. Kinda sticks, but.
I would ask that, I would ask that, and I, and I know it's a big ask, but I would ask that.
I don't know how we condition it that way, and no way, Mr. Pesci approved the plan, they may go back three or four times. How do we know how, I mean.
The way I look at this is, I took a jump, or a leap of faith, right, and I instituted a peer review. When I thought the board would institute a peer review, I knew they would, so I instituted a peer review before I even had a right to institute a peer review, thus saving you a week for a meeting.
And I appreciate it, and I appreciate that.
I'm just saying to you, if already, I'm trying, you need to look at that when this timing issue comes up, because even if it takes another meeting, you still save that meeting. What would be happened today is, we'd be saying, we want peer review presumably, and the peer review would have started next week.
I understand.
Instead, I took a leap of faith, and we started the peer review last week before this board said to do the peer review.
And I could, and I absolutely appreciate that.
So, my attitude is as follows, I think, Mr., by the way, Mr. Pesci is down south right now doing something different, but I think this plan needs to be looked at, Mr. Pesci, by Mr. Pesci, peer reviewed, interaction with you, Raul, whoever else may be, get the thing done, come back to this board, and presumably, with Mr. Pesci's, all his comments, thumbs up, right? And I have more, no problem interacting with Mr. Pesci, given him my input and my concerns, but this board should approve the ultimate plan.
And I believe we can, we can get to that. We can interact with him, we can get those revisions. From my point of view, from the engineering point of view, it's fairly simple, but it's a matter of getting his okay with what we eventually design.
I agree.
And there are several structures that can be used for the oil-water separator.
All doable, Raul, in my opinion.
And it is possible, and I know it's possible.
I don't think it is, that's what I'm saying, I don't think it's.
I mean, obviously, I see where the board's going.
My concern is, this board never, never gets to see that plan, and I'm not gonna be, I don't wanna be the guy that's pushing that button.
Okay, then I guess we're gonna have to continue till July.
If I could, we, we have, almost, we're almost there. I look at what happened. Ed Pesci did his review of your design, okay? He sent you, and us, a copy of his report. You sat down with that report, and you redlined how you proposed to comply with the recommendations that Ed Pesci made. But what we don't have is Ed Pesci then telling us, I have looked at the recommendations that Raul said he was gonna make, I'm in full agreement, it takes care of all of your problems.
Well, and if I can add to that, in talking to Mr. Pesci two and a half hours ago, he said, I haven't seen his reply.
Yeah, so.
So he hasn't even seen it.
And my just, my biggest, my concern is, is not a, is not a zoning concern, my concern is a contractual concern. I know that's not your issue, and that's what I'm worried about, is because of the contract, and, you know, and timing.
So if we have a meeting in July, we're gonna have a meeting in July, but presumably, let's just say we have a meeting in, in July, and we take this case up, and let's just say, thinking, you know, positively, that you get an approval in July, that doesn't meet your concern, that doesn't meet your timeline?
It may not, it may not.
I don't.
And as, I know, I said that, that what I'm saying is, without a, without an extension for the seller.
I don't know from, from one person here, specifically the chairman, I don't know how I can deal with your contractual obligations.
No, and I indicated that, I understand that, and I, I asked, I, I said it was a big ask. I knew that coming in, I had talked to Raul about it, he thought we had addressed the concerns.
Again, being totally tried, I, I went outside, I went outside of my purview, so.
You did, and I, and I was thrilled, I, and I, I was absolutely thrilled about that, and I expressed that, I mean, I understand that you did that.
Question for you, what's, what's the issue that you have to have this done right now?
And so we have it under a purchase and sale agreement, and there's time deadlines.
They have to close or have their comments within a certain period of time.
Maybe those two parties can work that.
Well, no, we hope so, we certainly hope so, because otherwise we won't.
I'm not comfortable right now.
I understand that, I understand that, and I, and I can, and I can go back.
You know, I'm signing my name to this.
No, it's, I understand completely, and I, I indicate, when I said it was a big ask, I knew it was a big ask, and I, and I, when sometimes when you have a big ask, the answer is no, and I understand that, so I'm not, I don't, you folks are volunteers. I've, I've sat on boards, I've been a volunteer in my town, I understand what it's like.
Let me just say one last thing, and I think this really will help you, right, because of the following. I made a list of concerns that I had, and frankly, if you were sitting here listening to my list of concerns, you'd be probably sitting there right now saying, I don't know if I can get there. So, but I'm not an engineer. So I said, Mr. Pesci, you, you went to college, you have that little stamp, you take care of it. And I, and my notes and my issues, that I've looked at all the permitting, both state, federal, and local, I'm not even gonna go there. Mr. Pesci and you can figure it out. That's my attitude.
It sounds to me that the, that the issues are fairly limited, and we can probably, hopefully get approved next meeting.
That's, that would be my goal. You said next, next meeting?
Next meeting, yeah.
I thought you said next week.
That's what I thought.
You guys, we can meet on the third of July?
Bottom line is, if Pesci says.
You'll be here long.
We're good.
Exactly. That's my attitude. What you wanna do is have Mr. Pesci say, I made the following comments, the applicant addressed them, it's depicted on the plan, and I'm all set to move forward with this application. And you wanna make sure that you fund his bill, and you wanna make sure you fund both his review and his inspection bill, please.
Ron, are you gonna send your questions, concerns to Ed Pesci and Raul?
I will send some questions to him. I don't need to go to, I will send some questions, Mr. Pesci, yes.
I wanna make sure they're all addressed.
I, I am more than happy to send some questions.
Could we have those questions, because I just don't wanna get a report from Ed Pesci.
I think it's best you deal directly with Mr. Pesci. I will interact with Mr. Pesci. I believe that at the end of the day, this, this is, this, this design ultimately will be approvable. It's just, you need to, to pay attention to Mr. Pesci's comments.
Yeah, and the, the project's not gonna change. What we're talking about here is changing the details to capture whatever spills.
Yeah, and dealing with some concerns that exist or may exist, because none of us on this board are gonna be sitting at the gate of this development, making sure that someone isn't there with a fuel truck fueling up, or when you have a hydraulic leak, that we sit there and say, oh, fix that hydraulic leak. It doesn't work that way, as you know. So we gotta do what we can to protect this scenario, even though we don't plan on being there on a daily basis, right? So there's, there's some, there's some questions out there that can be dealt with, I'm sure. I feel confident that you can deal with them with Mr. Pesci. I don't want you dealing with me and then Pesci. I think it's important that you two get together, I'll interact with Mr. Pesci, Mr. Pesci will interact with you. That make sense?
Thank you.
When can we continue this, too, Mary Ann?
July tenth.
That work?
Yeah, with the first date, yeah, absolutely. I'll make it work no matter what. Is it tenth or twelfth?
Twelfth, tenth.
So are you asking for an extension until July tenth, sir?
Absolutely.
Okay, so can I get a motion to accept the applicant's request for extension of July tenth?
Motion by the applicant to extend the hearing date to July tenth, two thousand twenty-four, for continued discussion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? All right.
Thank you so very much.
Lovely.
Good luck.
Well, that's it, we have gone back?
Okay, what are we doing?
The next one, which we're waiting for, Chris. Chris will be, Chris Corain will be submitting the.
Chris is here. He's taking a nap back there.
Chris? All right, so where is my agenda? So, Charlie.
Okay, I'll quickly go through the, what we need to.
Um, well, you're just gonna read the remand.
That's all I'm gonna do.
Thank you, sir. It is, there's a lot along to this.
I'll read what's here. Remanded hearing, Lakava trustee versus Mashpee zoning board of appeals, land court twenty-three miscellaneous zero 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 one one six, M D V, two thirty-four Old Barnstable Road. Remanded from the land court to the zoning board of appeals for further hearing, review, and reconsideration of the applicant Anthony J. Lakava, junior trustees, appeal to general laws, chapter forty-eight, eight, and fifteen of the building commissioner's December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two determination that the applicant's proposed development of twenty-nine single-family homes on the property located at two thirty-four Old Barnstable Road in Mashpee did not fall within the scope of the existing nineteen seventy-three special permit as amended. Washington Valley Development, because said special permit had lapsed, said property is located in the R five zoning district, map fifty-nine, parcel five, Mashpee, Mass. Plans and related documents may be viewed prior to the remand hearing in the CBA office.
So, the way I anticipate this moving forward, so myself, town council, Evan, and David have been working this for, I don't know, a couple months, spending a lot of time on it. The last couple weeks has been basically me spending the time on it, which is fine. So Chris is gonna give us an outline of the discussions that we had in reference to the decision. This is not etched in stone, the judge has not approved it, neither, neither side has a hundred percent approved it, but we believe, we're hoping, this is gonna be the settlement. This is exactly or very much on point with the settlement we discussed behind closed doors. So, Chris, if you could just outline that.
Sure, I'll give you a brief background overview. As, as the board may recall, I came before, I requested from the building inspector, building commissioner, a determination that my client was entitled to build a certain number of lots under a permit that was granted back in the seventies and had been modified over a period of time. The building commissioner disagreed with my assessment, and we appealed it to this board. The board at that time agreed with the building commissioner, saying that the permit had lapsed, and that permit, so that decision by the zoning board was appealed to the land court by the applicant. After several months of litigation and negotiations between the town, that the chair was involved in, that town council was involved in, that town planner was involved in, we came, the, the parties came to a resolution that basically has a, this, this is the framework, is that my client, the town has agreed to allow my client to build up to twenty-nine single-family lots, develop up to twenty-nine single-family lots. In consideration of that, and it's in the decision, there's a significant traffic mitigation that will be provided to the town. There is an affordable housing component contribution that will be part of this, an open space contribution of, as part of this. And I think that, and also consideration that this will be the full and final development of this property, and that there will be no future build-out, this permit will be closed after my client develops the properties that are, end up being approved. So, that's kind of the sum and substance of everything. Again, this is a negotiated settlement to, you know, avoid future litigation, and, you know, I think it benefits both parties, the ultimate goal is to benefit both parties, and I think that does that with this, and that, as I said, that's all laid out in this decision.
Question. When did this start, in the seventies?
The original permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was in the seventies. Yeah, it was in the 70s.
Okay, and it's now 2024.
Right, and.
Do you have a timeline when they're gonna start and finish?
Um, I.
They have to pay us.
Yes.
Here's how the.
If in fact, this goes through.
Yeah, so here's, here's how, this is one of my things, right? So I push this button, that I believe it was a five-year maximum payout.
Right.
They're paying us, they're paying the community $20,000 a permit. If they got 29 permits, what's that, $580 or something like that? They have up to five years, and they're gonna bond it. So if I'm a developer and I sit there and say, "I really don't wanna pay that $580 out of pocket, I wanna, I wanna do these 29 lots and get my cash," right? So the way that I felt to control timing on this, to close the permit, was put a maximum amount of time to get paid, and then bond it. And, and another thing, reason why I wanted bonded, because when you get to the last one or two payments, if they don't make those payments, there's no one to go back to, because it's single asset entity, right? Single entity asset, single asset entity.
But it's bonded.
Right, so now that it's bonded, I'm not worried about the fact that we're gonna get the last two payments.
Right.
And I'm not, I'm not disperging, I'm not looking anyone doing anything illicit, I'm just saying that from a standpoint of business, it makes sense to protect the town. So to answer your question, it shouldn't.
It's five years to build.
Five, it's five years to get paid.
For the affordable housing.
That's correct.
I think the traffic mitigation is, uh.
174, 175?
It's payable within 30 days, I think, of this appeal period.
So they gotta go to the planning board and obtain a site plan approval. If they get 29 lots and this site plan approval from the planning board, they've got 30 days from then to pay the town, I think it's $175,000 for the right to build them.
For the traffic.
Was it, well.
Traffic mitigation.
You know what?
217.
It comes out to almost $800,000.
217, 500 is the traffic mitigation. That is paid within 30 days.
So anyway, the bottom line is, so they go to the, the planning board, they obtain an approval. Once the appeal period is up, they then have to write a check within 30 days to the town of Mashpee, 217, 5.
Right.
Then they go, and they have up to five years to pay the $20,000 per permit. So they're gonna be vested to up to almost $800,000 in this deal. I would think they wanna build it and get done.
I would.
Right. That was, that's how we planned it.
So they pay the 800, but.
And it's less than 800, but, well, and they could sit on those 29 lots for another 10 years.
But nothing changes. The 29 remains 29.
No.
The deal's done.
Right now, the gray area that exists about any future permitting or any other is done, it's 29. Whatever they get from the planning board on their final approval, this permit closes out, there's no more.
So we will not come back before this board at any time in the future saying, "Hey, can we get 10 more lots or five more lots?"
Or the multifamily.
Or the multifamily.
The multifamily was an area over here, there's no more multifamily, there's nothing, this permit closes.
The permit closes with whatever's approved by the planning board for the number of lots.
There were three or four hot points that I felt were important, and that was closing the permit, securitizing payment, getting, it didn't matter to me if they built the 29 houses over 10 years, as long as for me, we got our dollars, our mitigation, and there was one other thing, which is the use of the common area, remember that? The, um, for Habitat, remember that?
Yep, it was an open space contribution.
Exactly, it was an open space contribution. So there's more to this settlement than even what he's saying.
Okay.
But that's the.
But it could go on, don't get me wrong, it could go on beyond the five years if the applicant chooses to pay the town and go into the 11th, 12th, 13th, eight years, nine years, 10 years.
Is there an issue if they don't start? Do you remember back, Mashpee Commons, right in the back of the room, had a start date, they had to start, or else?
We did not negotiate a start date, everything was based on dollars and cents.
So you understand where I'm going with this?
I get it. Our goal was to close the permit, nothing new, nothing more, and at that point, know that the dollars are coming, and whatever mitigation is coming to the town, and they have a period where they have to give us that mitigation.
Because I think the most, the more important thing, as far as, as opposed to a start date, there are payments that have to be made relatively quickly. So that's really what the start date really.
In the world of a developer, it's the dollars and cents that motivates, right? It's a business, and so they're gonna be out short of 800, not much short of $800,000.
807, 5.
In five years.
Right, so the, I mean, I think that's a good point to be made, is that they're outlaying, they're gonna be outlaying potentially a lot of money upfront, and to just sit on vacant land without, it just doesn't make business sense.
Now, they may have, they could have lots left to go, five years, 10 years, but I wasn't concerned about that. I mean, there's lots within our community that have been sitting here a while, didn't matter to me, as long as we capped the permit, securitized the payments, and the payments or the time period were capped. So those were the big things that mattered, and then Evan chimed in. There were things in this discussion that we started to go down a different road. Some people wanted some sidewalks, and I said, "Listen, guys, we can add to this for the next 10 years and get to nowhere, we need to close this discussion and call it a day." Because it just was gonna be counterproductive.
So it's, this is gonna go in front of the.
It has to go to the planning board as well.
Planning board, and they will approve the plan.
Well, no, no, it's not even this, so.
Roads, et cetera, the drainage, all that.
Right, site plan approval.
It will, it has to go before planning board.
It's the site plan approval, that was part of the criteria.
So they may approve 29 lots, they may approve 25 lots.
This decision has gotta be shared with the, so the other side is, the last time I saw it was, which was two days ago from Pat, where the other side said that we're gonna share, well, we're all set council-wise, but we're gonna share it with our, with our clients. That just tells me, they may or may not be set as attorneys, but the bottom line is, is they know what our, what our, you know, discussions are, and they've been back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I believe we are there with the other side, now we need a judge to say approve.
Yeah, right. The principal terms about the number of lots, the mitigation, the payments, all of that has been negotiated between the town and the applicant. So this decision is a memorialization of the negotiation. So I'm not, I'm not just submitting this and saying, "Hey, this is what we want." This is the memorialization of the, of the.
The culmination, the whole thing, and I can tell you.
And been reviewed by Pat Costello.
There was, there was a lot of upside and downside for our community. If we didn't get that piece of paper, it all wasn't a, you know, upside for this community. There are, there, as in any negotiator, there's, there is liability, and we had a certain amount of liability, and so didn't they. So that's why every, that's why the settlement.
Thank you for answer, I just had some unanswered questions, that's all.
So after this, there's gonna be a motion that you have, that you'll read, Charlie. Now, you understand the reason why you have the letter from the building inspector. This board, if we, if we see fit, is going to then find that the building inspector was not correct.
Yep.
And overturn his decision. You understand that, right?
I do.
Not that we're doing that today.
No, I understand that.
The other aspect, though, the other important aspect of this is, it closes the litigation.
Oh.
You know, so we didn't mention that, but that.
Well, and, and I'm not even adding in all the litigation and all the time and effort that Pat put into this, and so where this was headed monetarily from both sides.
Yep, right.
So, so, anyway, um, Chris, do you have anything else to put, to give for input?
No, I think that's kind of, I just wanted to give the board an overview. As I say, I don't wanna belabor it, because as I say, it's been a negotiated settlement over many months.
Do we, we don't need to read this in?
Um, so that's the decision that he just actually read to you.
Right.
So that's the con, that, he summarized that.
Got it, okay.
Now, you, if I asked Pat.
Should be signed off.
No, so I asked Pat if we needed to read that, and he said, "No."
Okay.
As long as we sign it off.
No, we're not signing off tonight. What, the motion, if you read the motion very clearly, it says that it's gonna be very similar, that the final decision's gonna be very similar to that. We're making, there's gonna be a motion that Charlie's gonna be asked to read, and it's gonna say in that motion that the decision's gonna be very similar to that decision. If it is not similar to that decision, this board's out of it. We're not approving it. Then it all starts over again. Please, no. All right, so.
You gonna read this, uh?
Yes, we should read David's letter, please.
Yeah, why don't you read Dave, David's letter?
Sure.
Okay, it's to memo two, Chairman Ron Bonvie and these zoning board members. From David Morris, building commissioner, June 10th, 2024. Subject, Lakava special permit, 234 Old Barnstable Road. Mister Chairman and board members, I wish to address my decision in regard to the Lakava special permit being lapsed. As with every decision, I am considerate of what is in the best interest for the town. It is my understanding that my decision is being challenged at a higher court, and there is a willingness on both sides to reach a resolution. I am of the opinion that an agreement beneficial to both parties is a much better option than further litigation. And I encourage the board to work towards the resolution. Thank you, signed, David Morris, building commissioner.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Charlie, could you read the motion?
Relative to the.
Read the motion.
Uh, remand here. Oh, yeah, sorry, anyone in the audience? I, I'm not so, this is kind of, it's kind of like non-conventional, but if somebody from the audience wants to speak up, feel free to do so.
Just wanna make sure, you don't want that to come back and bite you.
Yeah, no, I get it. I don't, I don't need a double remand.
Right.
One's enough.
Yeah.
Uh, remanded hearing Lakava trustee versus Mashpee zoning board of appeals, land court 23 miscellaneous 000116, MDV dash 234 Old Barnstable Road. Remanded from the land court to the zoning board of appeals for further hearing, review and reconsideration of the applicant Anthony J. Lakava Jr.'s trustees, appeal pursuant to general laws chapter 48, sections 8 and 15 of the building commissioner's December 30th, 2022, determination that the applicant's proposed development of 29 single-family homes on the property located at 234 Old Barnstable Road in Mashpee did not fall within the scope of the existing 1973 special permit as amended. Washington Valley Development, because said special permit had lapsed, said property is located in the R5 zoning district, map 59, parcel 5, Mashpee, Mass. Motion. And this will require a roll call vote at the.
Correct.
Move that upon further review and reconsideration of the circumstances, amendments to, and subsequent town board actions relating to the 1973 special permit authorizing the development of a golf course, clubhouse, 715 multifamily units, and 178 single-family units on 345.2 acres of property known and numbered as 234 Old Barnstable Road, assesses map 59, parcel 5, Mashpee, Mass. The scope and validity of which special permit was the subject of an appeal filed in the land court Lakava Jr. trustee versus, versus Furbush et al., uh, 23 miscellaneous 00116. The board votes to overrule the decision of the building commissioner dated December 30th, 2022, determining that the applicant's proposed development of up to 29 single-family homes on the subject property did not fall within the scope of the 1973 special permit, and that said special permit has lapsed. Subject, however, to the conditions that, one, the proposed maximum 29 single-family homes development shall, in all respects, comport with the terms and conditions stipulated by the applicant and the ZBA in disposition of the referenced land court litigation. Two, that said development should be consistent with the February 21, 2024 conceptual subdivision plan prepared by Baxter and Nye for the Lakava companies, which has been entered into the record of this hearing. And three, that said development of up to 29 single-family homes shall be the final development of the subject property authorized pursuant to the said 1973 special permit as amended, which special permit shall hereafter be considered closed.
Second.
Amen. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, those in, oh, roll call.
Roll call.
So.
Start with Sharon.
Sharon?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron, yes. So there we go.
Okay.
I think everybody did a good job on this one.
No, we appreciate the town's, you know, willingness to work, work this out. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Until the time. Long night.
Under the next remand.
After tomatoes.
We have so many.
So I will tell you that, just for the board, we did have oral argument on 228 Waiting Place last month in May, so waiting on a judge's decision, we'll see how it comes out.
I gotta tell you, when I go to my bank and they, they have that little question that says, "Are you being sued?" But I say, "Yeah, about 30 people, 30 different times," it's like, "What?"
Well, keep the board advised.
There you go, thank you. All right, I'm gonna go out, I'm gonna recuse myself from this next application, I'll be outside.
Sharon's in charge.
So you have to pick somebody else, Sharon.
I've done it before.
All right, is there enough to vote on? Oh, no, we still have to vote, yeah. You gotta pick somebody.
Sharon, pick somebody to.
George.
George, George is back again. Good evening, I'm just gonna put the other business before the board and then we should, that's you, okay? Uh, Mashpee. Come back, we need signatures. Other business, Mashpee Commons. We okay? Oh, I'm sorry. We have a little.
Charlie, would you please read in the next other business?
Thank you, Sharon. All right, other business Mashpee Commons. In accordance with condition six of section four, decisions and conditions of the comprehensive permit, Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership, Jobs Whiting's Trust, and JWT Phase, uh, ALLC request administrative approval of an updated unit allocation within the sub-phase, phases of phase one. All yours.
Thank you. Hi, um, good evening, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, my name is Tom Ferranti. I am here on behalf of Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership, Jobs Whiting's Trust, and JWT Phase 1 ALLC. With me is Peter Freeman of the Freeman Law Group, who has been involved with this project for longer than I have, and I've been here for 21 years, so. Um, we are here tonight to request administrative approval per condition six of the decisions and conditions of the comprehensive permit to reallocation of units within phase one of the project. Now, fortunately, I, I did speak with Mary Ann earlier today, and she let me know that, that the AV system is not working. So, um, I printed out hard copies of what I was going to present, and if it's okay, I'll, I'll hand the packet out to the board members, and then I, I did print out some larger versions to kind of go through, um, a little bit of the history and, and why we're doing this. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Tom.
How you doing, Tom?
Do you want me to leave one to the board?
Nah, me as well.
Thank you.
As a refresher for the board, um, this is the area of phase one. And through our various processes, through the years, um, there have been two different sub-phases that the board has approved. Phase 1A, which is the, the section along Market Street, it's 52 units. And then, two Novembers ago, the board approved sub-phases 1B through 1D, which was 127 units, for a total of 179 units in phase one. Of those 179 units, 45 will be affordable, they're all rental, it's a mixture of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. We, the demand for parking is 308 spaces, and 344 were provided, so we met the parking requirement as well. During the process with Mass Housing, to get into the final letter of approval for sub-phases 1B through 1D, Mass Housing actually made a request to us to split it into smaller chunks. They felt that 127 units was too much to do as, as one final letter of approval, so they asked us to, to, to do it in, in smaller pieces. So after sort of getting into logistical considerations, which included infrastructure, constructability, financing, we ended up splitting it into two halves on either side of Market Street, the west side and the east side. And in, again, going back to what the board has already approved, it broke down to 70 units on the west side and 57 units on the east side. And again, that's the 179 that the board has already approved. As we got into the specifics of design, civil architecture, we, we started to realize that there was going to be a benefit to actually each of the three sub-phases to reallocate some units from 1B through 1D into 1A. Uh, because we have an existing final letter of approval, an open final letter of approval from Mass Housing for phase one, we need to go. from Mass Housing for Phase 1, we need to go through this process to formally reallocate the units so that Mass Housing can update the existing one, and we have consistency with the number of units for the future final letter of approval for 1B through 1D. The proposal before this board tonight is to reallocate... Oh, sorry.
Probably the easiest job I've ever had, holding the microphone.
Thank you. It's to reallocate four units into Phase, Subphase 1A. We would take one unit out of the west side and three units out of the east side, which is taking four units out of 1B through 1D and moving them into Phase 1A. It doesn't change the total number of units. It's still 179. Instead of being 70, 52, and 57, it's now 69, 56, and 54. So you can see, and the reason that we provided the, the documentation for you is so that if you want to check to make sure our math is correct, you, you have all the, the numbers in front of you.
One second.
So the, the question is, why, why did we get into this? And there were, there were a handful of reasons. The first one is, when we moved from the, the two-dimensional world into the three-dimensional world, we realized that there were some infrastructure issues, specifically with the three buildings that we designed to have frontage on Job's Fishing Road. There is a fairly steep grade change between Job's Fishing Road and where those units will be, which meant those garden-level apartments were going to be walkout onto Job's Fishing Road. But it also meant that they were going to require their own infrastructure lines for three units, which doesn't make a lot of sense for a number of reasons. The, the second reason is that by eliminating some of the units, and specifically if you kind of flip back and forth between the plans, we eliminated this building entirely because it increased the amount of amenity space in the project. We started to look at having green space, park space, grilling space, you know, those types of, of things for the residents to have, and this was a good opportunity for us to, to take those units and replace them somewhere else and make a larger green space. And at the same time, there's a benefit to 1A to do all of these things. One of the biggest benefits is that it allows us to increase the typologies, the unit typologies in Phase 1A. We currently have one-bedroom and two-bedroom units only in Phase 1A, and the original plan for Phase 1A only included one- and two-bedroom units. The current plan for 43 and 45 is to create townhouse-style units that would have three bedrooms, so it's more geared towards families. The other thing that we are, we're, we're planning to do is to actually consolidate all of the commercial space into this building on the corner, which increases our ground-level unit availability, which we have found is very popular for the, the demographic that's looking for housing in Mashpee Commons. So it takes the commercial space out of the mixed, we don't have mixed-use buildings. We'll have straight residential buildings that will have ground-floor units. It's easier for us to get the group-two units in those buildings as well. It allows us to have more appropriate massing from a design standpoint. By taking the units and moving them into Phase 1A, we get buildings that are appropriate size now to match the existing buildings that we've already built. And as a matter of fact, we like Building 41 so much that we're going to copy it two more times. We're going to use the same building footprint, the same building sort of concept, to carry it up the street with Building 43 and 45, just changing it slightly again to eliminate the commercial space out of it, and that's where the three, the three-bedroom townhouse units will go. So to summarize, and one of the other things that, that is in your packet is a breakdown of each individual subphase and what it will ultimately look like now with its, with its units. So Phase 1A will have the 56 units. It's the same buildings, and you can toggle back and forth and see that generally speaking, the footprints are relatively the same. It's the same number of buildings. And then the west side and the east side, again, other than sort of eliminating a building for, for green space, it's the same layout. It's, the total number of units hasn't changed, it's just an, an allocation of units amongst the subphases. So the 179 units stays the same. The parking allocation virtually remains the same. There are now 309 spaces required, but again, we're still providing the same 344 because we're not changing the parking lots. The parking lots are staying exactly the same, so 344 spaces will be provided, 309 are required. The, the subphases are, are changed so that the reallocation changes the four units from, from 1B to 1D into 1A, so the total number of units doesn't say, change. There's benefits from a design standpoint, benefits to the project from a livability standpoint, from a unit typology standpoint. We think that it's a, it's a benefit to the project, and we hope that the board agrees. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So you're creating different buildings also, or not?
They're, they're, so we're, we're taking the...
Moving stuff.
The, the footprints in Phase 1A are going to be slightly tweaked from what was approved back in 2013, and if, if the board would like to see it, I actually brought the, a concept of, of what 43 and 45 would look like, which again is, is the same building elevation that has been in place with Building 41. So it's just, it's a, it's not, again, it's, it's with the four added units in that subphase, it changes the building footprints slightly, but still within the same area, not changing the parking lot layout, not changing any of the, the Phase 1A land area that's already covered by the final letter of approval. It's just changing the building designs, the building architecture, the building massing to account for the added units.
So you're, are you also increasing the number of bedrooms?
We are actually, it's only a change in bedroom of one, and that's why we're going from 308 units to 309 units, because the original, the original design for 43, 45, 46, and 47 had a number of two bedrooms, and we've just taken a handful of those two bedrooms, and we've now made them into three bedrooms.
Got it.
You mentioned the number of affordable.
Yeah, so with 100...
What's the percent?
It's 25%. So there will be 45 affordable units spread amongst the phase. Regardless of the allocation of units within the subphases, the total number of affordable doesn't change with the 179.
And that goes through, what, Mass Housing or something?
It does. Mass Housing is our monitoring agent, and, and again, that's, I believe that that's part of the reason that they asked us to break it into the smaller chunks, is because 127 units is going to take four to five years to build out. Breaking it into the smaller chunk finishes a subphase faster, and it allows them to monitor quicker. And so I, I believe that that's the reason they asked us to do this.
Are you required to have so many in each phase, instead of like putting them all in the last phase?
You, we are required to have 25% affordability before we can move to the next phase. So before the, the, the board and the Building Commissioner can allow us to move to Phase 2 of our, with our seven phases, there's many times more that you guys get to see me coming back here. Before we can move to Phase 2, we have to demonstrate to the board and...
So it's 25%, I'm sorry, 25% in each phase?
In each phase, yes. Not in each subphase, and that's, that's an important distinction, because we have weird, odd numbers now between the subphases, so, so it's, you know, one of them might have 24%, and one of them's going to have 26%. It's just, you look at the total phase, and that's what we have to provide.
I got it.
You wouldn't have a phase with 0%?
No.
The only way we would do that honestly is if we ended up front-loading and building more ahead of time, so that we didn't actually have any left to build in a final phase, because we have to demonstrate to the board that we have at least 25% before we can move on to another phase.
So they could put more at the beginning and then...
We could, yeah. We could, we could, I mean, if we wanted to, I don't know why we would, but if we wanted to make 50% of them affordable in, in a subphase, or in a phase, we could front-load. But then you get into the, the conversation about, are you clustering too many? Is it, is it an equal distribution amongst unitypes and neighborhoods? So it's, it's complicated.
I can see that.
So I, I think you said this is all residential, correct?
It's all rental, yes. And there's, the only...
All rental?
It's all rental, and the only commercial space remains as part of Phase, Subphase 1A on Market Street. There's no commercial in 1B through 1D. That is all residential in those buildings.
I think we already approved all of this anyway, didn't we?
You have, yes. Yeah, the, the board has...
It's just a repositioning of...
They're just redistributing.
Yeah, and, and the complication is because we already have the existing and open final letter of approval from Subphase 1A, which is why we need the board's blessing in order for us to formalize this and move forward. We've already had brief conversations with Mass Housing about it. They are aware that we are going through this process, and they're just waiting for this piece to finish up, and then we'll go through the process to amend the final letter of approval.
So I'm looking at, I don't know what this is, the section over to the right, if I'm looking at it.
Yep, the east section.
Know what it is?
I.D.E.
Yeah, where Benefit Street is.
Yep.
Okay, I noticed between Benefit Street and, let's say where Sienna is, the parking lot behind it, there's trees there. They, they going to stay there?
That's correct. When we originally advanced the 40B project, we had designed units for that section. When we got into really looking at the site design for, for this phase, it was actually during the process with the ZBA back in 2022, where we ultimately made the decision to remove any buildings from that site, so that we could leave it as green space, where we, we believe that that actually is an amenity, to have some undisturbed vegetated area. We are currently exploring ways to make a more formal connection between Benefit Street and Mashpee Commons to, again, take advantage of, of the green space that will remain.
Yeah, in other words, maybe a walking path to cut through?
Yeah, a, a stair, maybe, you know, it's, it's, it's about a, it's about a 20-foot grade change between Benefit Street and Stores Road. When we originally looked at buildings, we could have had three levels with zero-step entry with a mid-level road. I mean, it was, it's, it's, it's very steep between the two roads.
I remember that.
We had upside-down houses.
Now, I'm looking over here where the corner of Jobs Fishing, Job's Fishing, and 28, there's a lot of green space there also. That's not going to be developed?
That's outside of the 40B area. That's a completely separate lot that would be permitted separately.
Got it.
I got a question. I'm, I'm looking at Jobs Fishing. Are you putting more stop signs in? Is that what I'm seeing?
There are existing stop signs at the intersection of Job's Fishing Road and Market Street.
Yeah, that's a new one.
Yeah, it went in last October.
It's been a little while now.
Yeah.
Well, in October, yeah.
Because there was no warning, and people were blowing through.
Well, you know, it actually, it ended up being, when we got through the, the permitting process for this through the ZBA, and, and it started to look like construction was imminent, there was some concern that, that, that vehicle traffic that was already being detoured and was frustrated with detours was driving too fast, and some of the emergency personnel in the town asked us to, to expedite the installation of the stop sign, to begin to condition, condition drivers that it exists, and there will be crosswalks there, so that by the time we actually have people living in the buildings, the, the stop sign will just be second nature to people, and they'll, they're automatically slowing down because they know the stop signs are there, and, and it will be safer for pedestrians.
So you're going to put stop signs at Common and Benefit?
There will be stop signs from Common and Benefit onto Job's Fishing Road, but not at Job's Fishing Road. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be an intersection that you'll have to stop at to turn onto Job's, but, but the Job's Fishing Road traffic will continue through those intersections to Market Street where they will stop.
Someone who like drives through. Don't go through the rotary.
I try to avoid the rotary at all costs.
I have a question about affordable units. Are you going to have additional cost above the rent, like trash removal?
So all of those costs, other than utilities, are, are built into the rent? So the, the tenants are responsible for paying their rent, and then if they, their electric, their, their gas, I believe that water might actually be part of the rent.
So there wouldn't be something like an HOA fee?
Not for residential units, no. For, if it's a for-sale unit down the road, that's a nut, that's a completely separate calculation, and there, there, there can be homeowners association fees as a part of a for-sale, but as far as the rentals are concerned, the HOA is basically built into the rent that they're, they're charged.
Okay. That's been an issue in Florida.
Oh, really?
My daughter's in an affordable unit in West Palm, and she then on top got charged HOA.
$300 a quarter for HOA fees? Yeah.
Which then, it no longer was affordable after that.
It can happen. In Massachusetts, just real quick, the, and you probably are familiar with it with other 40B for-sale projects, but the amount of the homeowners association or condo association fee affects the formula that dictates the maximum sales price initially. So it, at least initially, and Mass Housing is a pretty good idea, and the other agencies, that the developer's giving a reasonable projection of what the fees will be. So at the start, and for usually, and I've done so many, I see it over the years, it usually is pretty much okay for, you know, several years. If there's extraordinary changes, then it is a legitimate question, you know, the homeowners who, I guess the expectation is, even though they're affordable and they're, they qualify income-wise, if costs go up, which means the condo fee would go up, then their income is also going up, and, and once they own the home, they could become a millionaire, and they can keep the home. So that's kind of just a different situation.
Every year she has to submit her income tax.
Yeah.
And it's based off her income tax, but that's just the rent.
Right.
Then they threw in the HOA, and then it's no longer affordable once she's served the HOA.
Yeah, so our, our affordable tenants, because we currently have eight deed-restricted units in the 32 that are already built within Phase, Subphase 1A, and those tenants do go through an annual recertification with, we have, the Angler Group handles all of that for us, and then Mass Housing ultimately will oversee that as well.
So the affordables are mixed in with...
Correct.
Everything else that you wouldn't even know.
Correct.
And there are also one, two, and three-bedroom affordables?
So right now, we only have ones and twos, and we have an even allocation, we have an appropriate allocation of affordable units based on the total number of ones and twos that we have built. As we advance these buildings, assuming that the board allows us to add the four units, to reallocate the four units, there would be four three-bedroom units that we would propose in 43 and 45, and one of those would be an affordable unit. We would keep the 25% of that unit type.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want to build all three bedrooms and then cluster all the affordables into one bedrooms. We do pay attention to that and make sure that there's a, an even allocation and distribution.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good. I'm good. All right. What do we need to do?
Charlie, would you like to make a motion?
Be happy to.
Motion relative to Mashpee Commons, in accordance with Condition 6 of Section 4, Decisions and Conditions of the Comprehensive Permit, Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership, Job's Whiting's Trust, and JWT Phase 1ALLC request administrative approval of an updated unit allocation within the subphases of Phase 1. Motion. Move to approve Mashpee Commons' request to reallocate four units between Subphase 1A, Subphases 1B to 1D pursuant to Condition 6 of the Comprehensive Permit decision. Section 4, Condition 6, and the adjusted site plan, excuse me, dated May 10, 2024.
And a roll call vote.
I'll second.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Very good.
Thank you all for your time. I know it's been a long night. I appreciate you sticking in for us on the tail end here.
He said, "Ronnie..."
...about his association and mine with this project is when mine started, I had brown hair.
I didn't have any gray when I started.
You were in grade school when it started, right?
Not quite. Thank you all. Have a great night.
You too, guys.
Night, Tom.
Phil.
Pass those... Mashpee? Send them back.
What's today's date?
I told him to send them in.
12, didn't it? Today's the 12th?
I told him to send them in.
It's just trash.
Oh, he's locked out. He went outside.
What is wrong? We're going to leave him out there.
Locked the door out.
Leave him out there.
We found Ron. He was locked out. It was a lock. It was the town hall.
Lock at 8:00.
Automatic lock.
He's yours now.
Yeah. Talked about the next lawsuit we're going to have. I couldn't come in to be heard because the doors were locked.
They must have thought you were long-winded.
That's not mine, that's yours.
You don't want it?
No, I don't want it. None of my business.
Charlie, would you like to read the next new business?
Mary Ann. You want these back?
Yep.
You don't want any of that.
I don't want it.
I don't want it. I don't want anything to do with it.
Keep this.
I don't want anything to do with it.
The next new business is to vote to reorganize Board member appointments.
I don't know if Ron heard that.
What?
All right, I started the meeting without you.
Oh, sounds good to me, don't worry about me.
Well, we need to reorganize.
Well, reorganize.
Okay.
This, come back.
All right, I nominate Ron Bonvie to be... I'll second. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. I'll nominate Sharon to continue doing what she's doing as...
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair.
I'll second. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll nominate anybody that wants to be clerk.
Who's a clerk now?
You are.
Well, you nominate...
No, I am?
Yeah, you are.
You.
You've been the clerks since the beginning. Oh, no, that's why you were.
You still wanna be, and you really wanna nominate Scott.
I forgot about that, yeah. Yeah, you refuse to do it, Scott.
I refuse vice chair.
Oh, okay, let it be the clerk.
Why don't you be the clerk?
What do I have to do as clerk?
Every meeting you have to attend.
What do you see me do?
All right, I nominate Scott to be second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice clerk job, Tom.
There you go.
I'd like to make a motion to move to approve the executive session meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes dated April 24, 2024, and May 22, 2024.
I'll second.
John, second.
All in favor?
Aye.